Good evening to the January 16th meeting of the Select Board. We're also joined by the School Board, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, as usual, we'll start with announcements. I know most people got announcements on their phone already about trash pickup, so we won't have to address that again. But Stephen, you have any other announcements?
Yeah, just to remind people that there'll be a public hearing tomorrow night for the Planning Board. That is a, I guess, rain or shine, for lack of a better expression. I did send out an email to town staff that there is a potential that town offices could be closed tomorrow because it's going to be a morning drive time snow event, but it should be cleared up by the mid to late afternoon. So, it is, the plan is right now that the public hearing will occur right here in A-15 tomorrow night at seven as planned. But for town offices during the day, people should check, probably the Facebook page is really quite honestly the best place for that, but we will put an announcement on our website as well. There'll also be a public forum. The moderator will be hosting a public forum on January 22nd at 7:30 in the Business Technology Center down the hall here in the high school. And that'll be also about the special time meeting warrant article. And then the special time meeting itself will be next Thursday, the 25th, at 7:00 PM. And I thought there was one more that escapes me now. But basically, but the big thing is for immediate term, people should, like I said, check the website and Facebook page for updates in terms of town offices and, you know, school closings and things like that, and to take care. It's gonna be, you know, when you watch the forecast, every time you watch it, the accumulations grow. It's usually a sign that it's moving in that direction, so just take care and stay off the roads if you don't need to be on them.
Okay. And so, as Stephen mentioned, these three events that are coming up, they're all, have to do with the decision on the Ruiyong Mansion, and it's basically, will it remain, or will it be gone, basically? And so, you know, we hope that we get as many people who are interested in being part of the discussion to show up to these events. First would be tomorrow night, and some people may just want to be spectators. Any other announcements from the Board? Okay. I guess we'll just go on to resident comments as usual. Any resident comments this evening? Okay. So, we'll move on to, we have the School Committee with us, and we are sort of continuing a discussion that we had, and what I've done is I've actually pulled out the minutes from our last meeting. There should be enough for everyone here. Let's see, I've got four there. Just so we can recall, because we're gonna discuss ways to, yeah, we're gonna discuss some of the issues we had concerning reaching our levy limit, increasing costs over the years, and how we're going to make up the difference. And so, we had talked at that meeting about possibly having a task force that would look at ways to generate more revenue for the town. Does everyone have one there? Okay.
We'll have a few more joining us.
Okay. That's a couple more. All right. And so, you know, we talked about a few different things, and I will just invite, I don't know, Michelle, if you had any comments about what your thoughts about the task force were, you know, for the last meeting, but we'll just continue the discussion, right?
Yeah, absolutely. I think, I think we're excited to be back at the table, and hopefully, at the end of the night, we can get moving on forming a task force so that we can start to conquer some of these issues we've talked about for so long.
And, okay, and so, some of the things that we did discuss the last time, is we talked about the burden of personnel services, you know, being the largest part of the, the cost of our budget, salaries and benefits, and then we talked about the contributions we make to the pension plans, and how it's not just a challenge to our town, but to towns all over the Commonwealth, in terms of keeping up with that. And so, we were talking about, you know, what are the possibilities of, you know, making some adjustments to OPAB, and looking at the way we may do hiring when possible. We also looked at the high costs of health care as being a major focus that's really developing, and I know, you know, Russ, who's done a lot of work in this area, has made it very clear to us that, you know, we are not alone as a community saying that health care could bury us if we don't address it in some way. Russ, I don't know if you had anything else that you'd wanna say, just off the cuff about, you know, when you talk with towns about health care.
What? What I said last meeting is that it's not simply the co-pays, deductibles, that type of thing, it's really the cost of health care itself. So, if we don't do something about that, it used to be, the budgets, you know, health care was more like 5% of the budget years ago, and now it's, you know, oftentimes 25% of a budget, 20% of a budget. If that happens, it just, you know, one tax is out to go up, and two, employee salaries usually don't go up, or not nearly as much as they might have. And so, I think that's probably the biggest driver right now in causing budgets to be so strained, is that health insurance is going up way beyond what, you know, inflation normally does, and what the state aid would be, and what our property taxes can support.
And Marie Angelis, you had talked about, you know, looking at ways to regionalize services, to reduce costs, and then perhaps looking at developing some land that's owned by the town, and you mentioned the water tower, the Turner Field, and, oh, no, you didn't, I'm sorry. But you mentioned, you know, looking at the Watertown property, which is about 17 to 20 acres of developed, developable land. I don't know. So, you know, these are the kinds of things. I don't know if I'm missing anything else that we talked about, some sort of roundabout ideas for our task force. If we have, if we develop one, how to use one. And so, you know, we're lucky tonight that, you know, as we talked about doing this task force and looking at issues like health care, which is a national issue really, not just local, and looking at retirement with OPAB, and trying to find ways to, you know, maybe take that out of a different place in our budget. We've also invited our state representatives. We have Senator Eric Lesser here, and Brian Ash, our state rep, and so, you know, we wanted to call them to the table to, you know, discuss some of these issues also with us, and, but I, if, before I call them up, I don't know if there's any other comments from the Select Board or the School Board as we move into the next phase of the meeting?
I would just say, I think in summary, it seems like we hit a few topics that would, you know, be good starting points for the task force. The first would be alternative revenue sources. The second would be legislative actions, and then the third would be health care and retirement costs and how that comes. So, you know, if we start maybe with that as our focus for the task force, that would be what I'd do.
And Maury, you're at the table today. Do you have a comment? Because you were at the last meeting, I forgot.
Yeah, yes, I was. Again, I wanted to thank the Select Board and the School Committee for inviting a representative of the Finance Committee to attend the joint meeting again, and I wanted to recognize that one of my membership here, Richard Leasay is over here, I'm in the audience. What, the one thing I wanted to mention very briefly was that the Finance Committee, in line with its mandate in the Charter to engage in long-term financial planning, has been looking at the question of long-term financial sustainability vis-à-vis the levy limit and the statutory hard cap. And what the Finance Committee has resolved to do is to, is to send out a, a simple and modest request to the Select Board, the School Committee, for, for taking some measurable steps towards getting our levy limit to a sustainable, a long-term sustainable level. We've asked for the town manager and for our town accountant, assistant town manager to engage in a projection. We, you see the information, I'm looking at the minutes, we're talking about a projection of 2023, which is five years, and we asked them to look at a projection that is much, that is longer term, something more along the lines of 10 years. But again, without the Finance Committee engaging in the business of trying to insert itself into the minutia of the different departmental budgets, and the hard decisions that have to be made, we still thought that it would, that we would be doing our part in our mandate to at least give some suggestions in terms of long-term financial planning, and we're gonna be doing that in the upcoming weeks.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. So, if I could ask Senator Lesser and Representative Ash to step up, and I don't know if there are, if you would plan to give us like a quick update about any policy that, any policies on the horizon? And then, you know, again, you know, some of the concerns about health care, you know, we could, we could address those after you talk about some of the stuff that you would love to present, or you'd normally present.
Sure. We'll be brief. We weren't exactly sure if you were, just had questions, or if you wanted a, a long list of things going on. But one, thank you all for inviting us to be here again. It's obviously our pleasure, you know, both the Senator and myself live in town here, which is an advantage for us as well as you. And I was talking to Michael before, and I served on the Select Board for three terms, and Senators Chief of Staff, Michael Clark, served on the School Committee for six years. So, it's a huge advantage for Long Meadow to have your legislators living in town and have the understanding of not only how the schools work, but the Select Board, and some of the difficulties that you face on a daily basis. And, you know, we're blessed to, I know, you know, probably half the people in here have my cellphone as well as the Senator's, so we can have direct contact, which is, which is nice for both of us.
Don't I like the open meeting law?
Oh, God. No, but it's nice that you have a direct line.
That was a joke.
Yeah. Joke by Senator Eric Lesser. But it does give an advantage that we can have better lines of communication, and we have a better understanding than maybe some legislators that haven't worked in the, in town government, and don't necessarily know the challenges that towns, and specifically Long Meadow, different than some communities that we both represent. And obviously, as was mentioned already about the tax levy and some of the, the issues that Long Meadow is going through and will continue to go through for the upcoming years. As far as some of the things, you know, budget-wise, obviously, the Governor will be coming out with, with their budget very soon, and as most of you know, from there, after the Governor's budget, it comes to the House, and we'll be doing our budget in April, and then from after us, it will go over to the Senate, the Senate will do their version, then it comes back, and this Joint Committee of Representatives from the House, the Senate, Governor, they'll come up with final budget. And that's where we try to see what we can do, if there's anything different, anything we can add in to, to help Long Meadow. And some of the things, I'm sure the Senator will be briefing on them. As far as the long-term, the tax levy, it's difficult to do something with that because out of the 351 cities and towns in the Commonwealth, not many are in the same situation as Long Meadow. So, if we were to propose something, the, the odds of getting support over the entire Commonwealth would be pretty slim, slim to none. So, it's the smaller things that we try to do to help the town in any ways possible, whether it's the, the millionaire's tax. I don't know many of them, but I guess we have the most millionaires in Western Mass, and that's just one small way of helping, and we do the, the sales tax with the, you know, the restaurants, smaller ways to bring in some sort of revenue, the Community Preservation Act. Even though this isn't gonna change the budget wholesale for, for Long Meadow, it is ways that, that the town can save some money and put money aside for other avenues. And what we've tried to work on, because I know when I was on the Select Board years ago, one of the biggest complaints we had was having an understanding of what the numbers are gonna be, so the town can do their budget for the Chapter 70, Chapter 90, to get a clearer picture, so they know where they stand. I know that is something that all the reps, and I'm sure the Senators as well, have worked collectively to try to get the numbers out quicker, to try to get it back to the town, so the town can have a realistic idea of where they sit, what the numbers are gonna be. You know, I'm happy that, you know, over the last eight, 10 years, we've tried to stay consistent with either level or increasing it every year, which, hopefully, again this year, and I know the Governor just came out with his projections, and the revenue is a little better than anticipated, so the state is on good grounds right now, the, the economy, obviously Massachusetts, better than most states in the country. Unemployment rate, well, I'm lucky, my district's probably been the lowest in the Commonwealth. Yours might be a little different because you have the city, but overall, the, the unemployment rate in Massachusetts is well ahead of the country. So, in a lot of ways, we've, we've done remarkably well, and obviously, when we talk about health care, that's, that's a burden, that's it, obviously, not only local, the Commonwealth as well as the country, that's probably one of the biggest burdens, biggest expense, is the biggest burden expense on every local community, and that's something we continue to work at. And obviously, we've got great health care in here in Massachusetts, but it comes at a cost. So, those are just briefly some of the things. I know the Senator will probably want to touch on some of those, and maybe a few others, then obviously whatever questions you have, and/or suggestions.
Yeah. So, I'll, I'll be brief. For the record, State Senator Eric Lesser, I have the privilege of living in Long Meadow, and although I never served on the Select Board or the School Committee, I did hold signs for Brian's first, first race.
That just shows her age. He was a sophomore in high school when I read.
But I'll just be brief. I mean, we're here, we try to, we're certainly in regular contact with the town on a whole variety of issues, but we're here in a more formal capacity as we begin our budget season on Beacon Hill. Unbelievable that that's already starting again. But, but as Brian, or as Representative Ash laid out, the Governor will put his projection out and his budget out shortly, and usually in February, tied to the State of the State, which is next week, and then the House will provide its draft in April, and then the Senate goes in May, and hopefully, the whole thing gets reconciled by the end of July. So, with that, I don't have anything formal. I, we mainly wanted to just come and ask questions, so we'll turn it back over to the Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Great job of getting us in the right mode of thinking. So, I guess I would start with, you know, the question about, you know, if we are to organize a task force to try to avoid, you know, going over the levy limit, you know, and we look at some of, you know, these different options we have, what would you say would be the best direction for our task force to put their energy into in terms of statewide? Are there any specific initiatives? Or, you know, when we look at health insurance specifically, is there anything that would be, I don't know?
I mean, that's, that's tough to put your finger on, like, because as I mentioned before, every community is a little different, some a lot different than Long Meadow, and their needs or where they're at with the tax levy is much different, and, you know, Long Meadow's up here, and a lot of other communities are down here, so their interests are gonna be different. So, you know, looking ahead, I think we gotta look at, obviously, you know, a good 10 years out, because some of these communities will catch up, you know, sadly, but they will catch up and be in a similar situation, which then, obviously, their interest is, you know, it'll pique their interest a bit more. So, I just think we gotta look at long-term, what can Long Meadow do, but what can Long Meadow do then collectively to tie into these other communities that will be in a similar situation in the somewhat near future?
Okay.
So, just to chime in on that, Chair, I think my, my advice to the, my respectful advice to the Board and to the Finance Committee is to set, to discipline your analysis of this into kind of four categories, because the, the town fiscal issues is something that we've been dealing with quite a lot. I've got nine cities and towns, two cities, seven communities of varying sizes, that are all going through variations of this challenge. The first is, I do think that you have a role to play in pushing and influencing state fiscal policy. So, whether that's items like the millionaire's tax, or items like expanding group, group insurance pools, or, you know, tougher leveraging and negotiating with health care providers on a state level. Small example is, for example, the Epi-PED and Narcan, both purchasing programs, that Representative Ash and I worked on together. There's no reason we can't do that for a whole variety of drugs that town employees need to purchase. If you get the price of those drugs down, those savings are gonna transfer on to the town's insurance program. So, I would, I would do a real analysis of kind of state-level fiscal policy changes that you could insert yourself in as advocates and as kind of people on the ground to push for. The other item is town fiscal policy. I don't wanna get in the middle of that's your prerogative, but I do think a kind of real analysis of, you know, have we thoughtfully squeezed everywhere that we can, and also, have we really exhausted every already available, you know, source of revenue, or, you know, the commercial rates, have we developed all the available land, et cetera?
Regionalization, I know.
Right. So then the third, and again, regionalization would be part of that. So, for example, Rep. Bash and I have been involved with this, and I know a lot of you have been involved with the regionalization of the, of the 911 calls and the dispatching. I don't wanna get into the pros or cons of that, but that's an example of a type of policy that I'd put in that. The third item is, I think we need to have a kind of sober conversation about revenue, both the rates, and are the rates fair? So, that's connected to the millionaire's tax that I'm advocating for on a state level, but also changes we can make to how, how free you are to collect new sources of revenue. So, I'll just give an example. Rep. Bash cited the Regional Ballot Initiative. That's a bill I have that I filed. What this would do is it would allow communities and regions to put, to put, you know, revenue raising measures in front of their voters. So, if you wanted to invest in better rail access along the Pioneer Valley Corridor, you could create a, you could create a region of all the communities that would touch that rail link and have a vote together to put some sort of assessment on yourselves to, to either improve service or increase service. You could do that for schools, you could do that for, for any host of things. My bill is specifically on transportation, so if you have a road connecting a whole bunch of towns, and you wanna collaboratively share the cost of fixing that road, there's no mechanism in state law right now for the, for those communities to band together as a region to make the improvement. This has been used in Denver, it's been used in California, it's been used in a lot of communities around the country to greatly enhance transportation investments and bring down costs. So, that's just one example. There's a whole lot of other examples. There's a bill around local options on gas taxes. So, our colleague Rep. Pignetelli from the Berkshires has this. People probably know there's a gas station in Lee, that's like one of the last gas stations in Massachusetts, the Berkshires, before you go into New York. There was some sort of analysis done, only a small portion of the people stopping at that gas station were actually Massachusetts residents, so hey, why don't we put a, why don't we put a little bit of a higher tax just on that gas station? It's a little tongue-in-cheek, but the point is, is that there's no flexibility right now for how we make those assessments, and there's some current legislation pending to do that. And then the final piece, which I think is gonna be important to analyze, I think it's important for your, in your role as leaders in the community to recognize, is we have a broader challenge in Long Meadow and in Western Massachusetts more broadly, that no, that is not going to get fixed by our tax rate structure, or by, or by new assessments, and that is that our economy in this region is not growing, so that when we do rounds of, of property value assessments, they're not going up. And so, to make up that difference in an environment of rising costs, you have to raise the rate. Communities in Eastern Massachusetts don't have to raise the rate, because every couple of years, they do a revaluation, and the property values continue to skyrocket, so they collect more money every year without changing their rate. So, I think we need to step back also for a second, think through, okay, what are we doing to get property values going up, and to get the economy dynamic here? And that brings in broader policy changes around workforce development, around broader education.
High-speed rail would come with that.
Yes. And high-speed rail. So, not to be a broken record on that, but that's where I see it fitting in, you know, to the broader set of challenges. So, that would be my, those would be my suggestions for how, how you guys go about the analysis, and I'm happy to, and I know, you know, Rep. Bash, we're, we're together committed to giving you guys the resources that you need, whether it's specific bills, introductions to state leaders, et cetera, to make that happen.
And I think just, if I may, piggyback on it, just thinking out of the box, which I know you do, and, you know, driving that, not just looking at the way things have been done, but what can we do creatively? How can we do it, whether it's the regional parts, looking at all these other things? And remember that, you know, you drive what we do, so, you know, we can think up things, but we take our cue from you. I mean, one, as residents of Long Meadow, but as the leaders in Long Meadow, we take our cue from what you think is the best option, what you think you need help with, whether it's you have a specific idea about a piece of legislation, a bill that you think will help the residents of Long Meadow, or if you have kind of an idea, but you're not sure how to implement, or you're not sure the best target, that's what we're here for, you know, to either take a cue, file legislation, or to work in unison with you to try to help, you know, craft a bill, craft a piece of legislation that could benefit the community or the local communities around here.
Well, that was, that was very helpful, and, and some, you know, some of those things we discussed a little bit, and, but the last thing about really trying to draw people to our community, we're a very desirable community to live in, and you'd think that if companies knew a little bit about our town, that they would want to relocate here. And, of course, we don't have a lot of space, but, but that is something new that, put on, new on the table, actually. Now, you know, I know that we had kind of moved, the place that we left last time that was very strong was about health, and I don't know if you had something you wanted to say, otherwise, then we'll look at Mark, go after that.
Yeah. So, the health insurance, last time we talked, well, some of us talked about using the Mass Association of School Committees, and the Mass Municipal Association, you know, the Representatives and Senators in the area, to really push the idea that health insurance has to change, the cost has to change, because really, that's, that's the driver of the problems. I mean, all the places I work with, they all say the same thing. And the, and the problem with that is we all say the same thing in a silo. So, if we need to start saying that together, because nothing's gonna change, and the reality is, we can only, you know, so we deal with Massachusetts, but I think if that really started, there was a Good Time Magazine article about it years ago that was right on point. Everybody that I knew that read it thought it was great, talked about why insurance is too much, that there's no real controls over how they bill, they have these charge master lists that are just made up at each hospital, they're not even, there's no standard. So, those are the types of things that I think we could organize as elected officials to try and push that agenda, because that doesn't change what, what you said earlier about the legislation being very unlikely. That really concerns me as a resident, because I know on the School Committee, what that means, once we hit that $25 per thousand, is we need to cut about a million dollars a year from the school budget, every single year. That would devastate the school. On the town side, you have about the same, you know, it's almost 50/50, so let's say you're 800,000 a year. That's concerning to me, because no matter what we talk about locally, let's say it's not 2023, it's 2028, we're probably not able to push it out much more than that, because unless property values go way up, which they're not going to, I don't think, or our health insurance goes way down. Those are the only two things that are gonna prevent us from hitting $25 within the next 10 years or so, in my opinion. So, that's something I think is, we should focus on. I think that's gonna be a very slow process, but as Eric said, there's ways to get some of those pieces in place. And I'm not talking change deductibles and co-pays, that's just...
No, but I think you're right on point with, everybody's gotta be together on it. And like with anything else, the more people you have working for the same mission, the more power you have, the more clout, and hopefully, you're all like-minded, and as you mentioned, everybody talks about it, whether you're a small business, large business, how, you know, what a burden health insurance is onto their, their budget. So, if everybody's on the same page, pushing the same agenda, whether it's, whatever it is, you know, cutting the medication costs or whatever, whatever it is, then at least you have a little power, and hopefully, some negotiating power to make some of these things, and whether it's a stopgap or a long-term solution before we can do anything about the tax levy, I think that's important.
Yeah. I mean, the, the health care costs are, are an existential issue. I mean, on a state level, it's now, mass health is now 41% of the state budget, and it's crowding out, I mean, part of our, of our inability to better fund local aid. it's crowding out, I mean, part of our inability to better fund local aid, is because every single year, we're seeing double-digit mass health growth just in the mass health program on a state level. So this is a big national and kind of global economic issue that's complicated, but unfortunately comes to a head in communities like ours. The way I kind of approach healthcare is, I sort of think about it as three elements. You need very, you need good universal access. I do think that's a moral imperative that we have. In Massachusetts, we basically have that. You need high quality. In Massachusetts, we also have that. What we don't have is cost, good, under-control costs. So I think those three elements are access, control, access, quality, and cost. And we've done a great job over the last 10 years in Massachusetts on access and on quality, and we've done an absolutely awful job on cost. So I think there's a lot we need to do. I think broader bulk purchasing of prescription drugs. I'd be open to drug importation from Canada, which is something we've tried to do on a state level, there's federal roadblocks, but something we've tried to do. I think we need to open the door down the line to single payer. That's my own opinion, that's a little bit beyond the scope of this conversation, but imagine if you didn't have healthcare obligations on your books anymore. So that's something I think to think about as a body. And I also think we need to do a better job of leveraging group purchasing power. I mean, there is the Group Insurance Commission, and there have been some changes around that in the last five, 10, 15 years, but there's a lot more we could do, particularly around things like negotiating for drug prices, and moving towards treating overall health and wellness rather than a fee-for-service model of medicine, which is really what drives the costs up. If we reward the healthcare system for keeping people healthy and keeping people away from procedures, versus rewarding the healthcare community for doing as many procedures as possible, that will ultimately drive the costs down. A lot of that's way beyond what the town can do, but it's dependent, the town is actually probably dependent on a lot of those bigger things happening, because that's what's driving the cost of the healthcare market.
Well, if we're not vocal, none of those things happen. Nobody's going to do that on a town.
And that's something, as a nation, last one, we really need to have that paradigm shift where you treat for health.
The only thing I'd add to what you said, I agree with everything you said, but I'd also say transparency.
Yep.
The fact that you don't know what you're going to pay when you go in.
Right.
You know, that's something time really focused on, because where else do you go in and buy something?
Kind of handcuffs, like going to a mechanic. You don't know what you don't know, so it's tough to argue with it, because you don't know what the cost or what a procedure is, or what you need.
So something to look out for, the healthcare bill that the Senate passed in the fall, the House is working their own version through right now, includes a truth in billing section. So for example, it would limit the use of things like facility fees, that often get tacked on to the, at the end of healthcare bills without really any transparency or explanation to patients. And also, the issues we've had around added network providers. So if I get in a car accident, and I get rushed to a hospital, and an anesthesiologist puts me under for a surgery, and that anesthesiologist happens to be on a different plan than my insurance, I'm unconscious, I have no idea what's going on, and I'm slammed with a $12,000 bill instead of a $100 copay. So these are serious issues that drive up the cost of healthcare, and yeah, you're absolutely right, the lack of transparency is a big part of it.
Okay, Mark.
Thanks. Brian, if I could, I just want to go back to what the town can do, because some of the things that we talked about are more state-level or national policies. But one of the things we talked, you made a quick comment about, it's unlikely the legislature would do anything to give us relief from the Prop 2 and 1/2 ceiling.
In the short term.
In the short term. But I'm just wondering if they would be amenable to a home rule petition? In other words, which is different from looking for a change in the state law, but if we could locally gather enough people so that there was a town vote to allow us to, within the confines of no more than 2 and 1/2% per year, but just get rid of that $25 cap, is that something we might want to take to the legislature as a home rule petition? Because the way I see it, the town's got four options, maybe only three. And Russ, you were dead on the money. When we get to $25, terrible things happen. We're going to cut services drastically. Russ said $1 million a year, and he's probably optimistic at that potentially. So it's either cut services, we're going to move costs from taxes to fees, which have already started, which are going to start tonight with one of the things before the Select Board, which doesn't save anybody money, but it just shifts money from your left pocket to your right pocket. Or we can truly constrain our costs to try to freeze the budget, and let things kind of move up very, very, very slowly, but with a $25 cap, even that's not possible. So I think the third and probably only option is, then override Prop 2 and 1/2 if the people in town want to continue the services at the level they have, they want to continue the schools at the quality and level they have. Remember, last year, our property values went down in town. So they went down, what, 2/3 of a percent or something like that?
.2.
.2%. So that, with our cap going up, with taxes not able to go up more than 2 and 1/2%, we actually were constrained. And so I think this concept of an override is something we might also think about. The other thing is that, Senator Lester, you talked about influence state fiscal policies, but how can we be assured that when we do that, the additional state income tax, income, whether it's a millionaire's tax, ends up back in the town? Because if it just ends up, it doesn't help our situation of relieving this 2 and 1/2, Prop 2 and 1/2 cap that we have. And I'm not saying that's not the right thing to do, but we're trying to address the Prop 2 and 1/2 cap. And so somehow, we've got to get more state money potentially back to the town if we're going to support some of those things to give us that relief. So I'm just wondering if home rule petitions potential, or getting more money into the town some other way, or getting, if you will, designated new income, so that we'll be glad to support the new income if we know it's going to come back to the town and give us relief from Prop 2 and 1/2.
Yeah, Mark, I think the home rule petition's a good idea. I think that's the kind of thing you've got to think about, short term. I don't know off the top of my head if there's anything that would prevent that from happening, but I think that's something we should absolutely look at in the short term. And I mean, we can look at, if you want to talk about it, or I talked to Stephen afterwards, at the possibility of trying to do something that sooner than later.
Yeah. I mean, just to chime in on the home rule, I mean, there's a pretty strong culture in the legislature, that if the sort of home district senator and rep have a home rule bill that they're supporting, that they're generally non-controversial. But home rule bills are typically on fairly routine stuff, like land transfers and things like that. So it's a little bit up in the air.
We'd have to check to see if, like I said, anything precludes us from being able to follow through with that.
Yeah. So we just, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, certainly something I'm open to, and I'm sure we'll be able to discussing it.
And it's a sell for the leaders of the town to sell the community to vote for something. I mean, I assume we'd have to come to a referendum, so we go to the legislature and say, there was a town referendum that supported it, and it's going to take a while for us to sell that to win a referendum. But nevertheless, faced with the fact that you're either going to lose services and lose your school system over three or four years, or you're just going to have your taxes continue to go up, as they have been 2 and 1/2% a year, just we'll ignore the $25, which is an artificial cap relative to anything else. We're just caught in a situation where our property taxes, our property values are lower than they are in Boston. But I think people need to understand that even though Long Meadow has the number-one tax rate in the Commonwealth, we are 41st in average tax bill. So people in Long Meadow are not paying the highest taxes, they're just paying at the highest tax rate. And that's just a relationship to having low property values. And so that's the kind of petitions that I think we need.
Yeah, and we can find that out relatively quick, if that's doable.
Which is why we've got to get property values higher.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Richard?
That plays right into my next question. I was at a seminar this weekend talking about the new tax plan down in Connecticut, and Massachusetts forecasts for our communities, somewhere is 2.5% to 4.5% decrease in property values because of the tax law. Has there been any discussion at Boston? Some other states apparently are looking at ways to offset some of the provisions of that, and change the way the money exchanges to give people credits back, especially Connecticut. I think they down there, they said the average one is $19,970 exemptions, which has now been taken to $10,000. So they're looking at ways to somehow credit the people back with that money. But across the country, the areas out west, I mean, your property values are going to go up 6% and 7%, but we're going to be hit hard up here, not so much here as New York and Connecticut, and the closer you get to the major mega areas, Boston, et cetera. I'd like to know your thoughts on that. The other thing, is there any possibility of local taxing authority on, like the millionaire thing? Because like Mark said, and I was going to mention, the provisions of that are quality education, affordable public housing in universities, repair and maintenance of roads and bridges, and public transportation. And I think we've talked before, we are at a disadvantage for our road system, because the formula for that is set up for Boston and major metropolitan areas, and job centers. We are none of the above. I think we've had this discussion before.
I want to know if the millionaire's tax could be shifted to use...
Yeah, is there any provisions for local authorities? Because if there are not, I mean, you're right, we've got a lot of millionaires. So I can see that our money's going to Boston, or some other place that's going to take the money that has the job centers, which we don't have. But we have the traffic, we have all the mixing for a regular city, except we just don't have the job centers. So two points. Have you heard any discussion there on the tax law? And a second one, is there any discussion on the millionaire's tax, or is it strictly going to be tax and go?
For the millionaire's tax, I haven't heard any other discussion. I can check into it, and I don't know how it's set up as far as if there's any leeway where you can use it. But if there's not, it would be a difficult change, or it wouldn't be anything that could happen overnight, because you'd have to file legislation to change the whole thing, which could take quite some time. But that's actually easy to find out anyway.
Well, the provisions of the bill were pretty restrictive on where the money could be spent. Written into the Fair Share Amendment, the exact language requires that it be spent on education, and on transportation. It doesn't use, it doesn't limit it to public transportation, it just says transportation.
Actually, it said public transportation, I thought.
But it's part of a non-limiting list of transportation elements that it would fund. So it would include road projects. But you're right, the broader point is correct, which is that it's not specifically earmarked for aid to local cities and towns. Now, it could indirectly help with unrestricted aid, because if there's more money, if the state is spending more money on improving roads and getting schools up, it would probably help, for example, with Chapter 90, and it would help with local school aid, not the unrestricted aid portion, but with the school aid. So it would still be very helpful, transformatively so potentially. But the broader point is well-taken, which is that you don't have a lot of control over the revenue sources right now, which is why, bringing it back to the opening comments I had made, we have pending legislation right now that would give quite a lot more authority to local cities and towns than they currently have, including a bill I filed, which is out of committee and we're waiting for a vote on the floor around regional ballot initiatives that would allow communities to set up regions to create new assessments for things like local transportation projects, and local road and bridge, and public transit projects as well. And there's a whole menu of other items that we could look at, whether it's giving more freedom around tobacco taxes, more freedom around gas taxes, more freedom around local assessments for all kinds of different things. A lot of those bills have already been written and are already there. I guess what I would say is just sometimes we need help, we need assistance making sure that the urgent doesn't constantly crowd out the important. So a role that this board can play, and that other cities and towns can play, is lobby us. Come at us and tell us what specifically of those menu of options would be the most helpful for you. I know it's helpful for me. When the board comes to me and says, we need this, what I do is I take that letter, and I take that solicitation, and I run around to all my colleagues, and I say, look, look, it's not just me talking, it's, my community needs it. So don't be shy about sending that to us.
Right, because that really does give more credibility to, when we're trying to ask for something, that it's not just us personally asking for it, this is a community need.
Russ?
I think something Mr. Gold and Mr. Foster just said is really a big problem for Long Meadow. So I agree with what you said about the average tax bill, but let's take the person that, I'm going to use easy numbers, so you have a million-dollar home in Long Meadow, that person is paying the highest tax rate in the state, so they're paying $24,000, almost $25 at this point. If you're out in eastern Mass, that same million-dollar home is $14,000 in a lot of places. So...
I'd say a million-dollar home would be a $5 million home, though.
That's the claim.
Let's say you go to Hopkinton, you go to Sudbury, you can buy a nice home for a millionaire. So you can go to Hopkinton, right on 495, buy a million-dollar home, pay $14,000, or thereabouts. The tax plan is not going to let you deduct more than the $10,000. So all of a sudden, Hopkinton looks like a hell of a lot better place to buy from a financial point of view than Long Meadow. That's the type of thing that concerns me, because we can do legislation to go over $25, that's great, it helps us. The downside is, it makes us even less attractive, because we're going to be the only one over $25. So we really need to think about a global plan where we try to cut costs, and we probably will need legislation to go over $25. But I think the tax plan for Long Meadow is a huge killer, because it's really, it'll kill the high-end market in Long Meadow, that's for sure.
Tom, can I just answer that? Because Russ, thank you for saying, this is kind of a straight man. So if I could, this was 10 days ago in the New York Times, I'm going to read the first two paragraphs, and this is something I'm going to give you, because I think the state legislature needs to act on this. So it says, this is from Fairlawn, New Jersey. "Faced with a new federal tax law that limits state and local tax deductions, three communities in New Jersey have come up with a novel solution. They want people to donate to a town-run charity as a way of mitigating their property taxes. The three towns, Paramus, Park Ridge, and Fairlawn, announced on Friday that they would allow residents to donate the same sum they would have been charged in property taxes to pay for municipal services. Under the tax bill signed by President Trump last month, deductions for state and local taxes, including property taxes, are limited, but charitable donations are not." I mean, if we could get a state, assuming this New Jersey system passes whatever challenges it's going to, I'm sure, get, the same thing in Massachusetts. I mean, it doesn't necessarily save Long Meadow money, but it certainly saves our residents' money by being able to, as you said, Russ, now being able to take your money and actually have, be fully deductible the money you're paying for residential or community services in town.
Mark, is that in lieu of paying their taxes, or in addition to?
It's in lieu of paying their taxes. In other words, you either contribute to the charity, or you pay your taxes. And if they can contribute, it's a long article, I'll give it to you. But it's, somebody put a lot of thought to this, obviously, and came up with this. And the IRS has now said they're going to look at it, but the experts that are quoted in this say that it looks like it's truly a loophole to the restriction on deductions. Now, again, the New Jersey legislature has helped this along, but I've got to believe if it works there, you're going to see it other places.
Connecticut's considering doing the same thing.
Well, that's a great creative way. I mean, if it does work...
Right. But ultimately, it doesn't save the town and Long Meadow a lot of opportunity, but it does save our residents from, somebody who's paying $15,000 a year in property taxes and can't deduct it anymore, is got a big difference.
I'll chime in on that in a second. I mean, the other positive thing is, we kind of have the infrastructure in place already with LEAF. So we need to examine that a little bit more carefully, and what New Jersey's legal structure is that allows that. But there has been some discussion about this, and I know that, at least in the Senate, we need to and want to do something in response to mitigate the impact of the federal tax plan, which is very, there's no real way around it, it's very bad for, like Long Meadow from a fiscal picture. I'm not getting into the broader political argument, but from a fiscal picture, the doing away with the SALT deduction, the state and local tax deduction, is very, very damaging for communities like Long Meadow. So we need to figure that out, whether it's creative solutions like the foundation, or other adjustments we can make to the schedules of how we do our tax revenue. Interestingly, the state tax collection data showed a pretty dramatic uptick this last month, and some of that is because of strength in the economy, which was expected, but some of it is because there's been a huge surge in filings to get ahead of the tax change. And so it's creating a lot of instability... And so it's creating a lot of instability in the state's fiscal picture, which is impacting our budget right calendar, because we don't exactly know. There was a consensus revenue estimate that came out a few, about a week ago, but we don't, we don't necessarily know what we're working with yet until all of this shakes out, because some people held back their taxes, some people proactively filed, some people are waiting. And so it's going to probably take several months at a minimum to get that sorted out, which adds, obviously, potential, the potential for even more delay.
Yeah. Well, Paul Bostersik had announced at our last meeting that in the last month, couple of weeks of January, people paid what, $3 million in their taxes, just for doing that.
Just in town, yeah.
Yeah, just in town to get out of the game there.
Paul's Home Alone.
But if we could put a vehicle like this in place, I mean, the other thing that's happening in the very near future is we're looking at the kind of building project that people would contribute to. We're trying to get a senior center, we've been trying to get a new senior center for a long time. And if we could tell people in our community, especially those who are going to be subject to a millionaire's tax, or to property taxes that were not going to be deductible, that they could contribute to a senior center, I mean, that would really be a home run for us, because it would reduce the overall taxes that people in our community are going to have to pay, because we are going to have to take a loan out for that amount, we don't have it in savings, obviously. So, you know, that would be, definitely it would be a good thing for us to be able to promote, if it's possible, for people in the community. Because, like Richard says, you know, that money's, you know, the money's just going to go to Boston, you know, it doesn't really come too much further than 495, so. Now, I don't know if other folks, you know, there's any other points you'd want to add to the discussion, or, yes, Paul?
I'll just say two quick things. First of all, we will have a property tax rate over 25 next year, so it is going to raise a lot of eyebrows. And mainly, that's because of all the debt exclusions the town of Long Meadow has. The other thing I'll say is, the OPEB liability seems to have taken a backseat over the last couple of years. And you may recall that there was a governor's task force that did a certain study and made some recommendations on that, probably about five years ago now. One of those recommendations was to prorate the amount that the municipalities would contribute to retirees' health insurance based upon a 10-year or 20-year, how many years of credible services they had. Thought that made perfect sense, but I just, I guess I just asked how you look at that task force, recommendations on the OPEB liability, because I thought there were some interesting things in there that could potentially help us.
All right.
Actually, this is what Stephen's idea, and I think it was brought to you before, and I'd like you to really consider that, piggybacking on the OPEB. And that is, the towns that have created trust, and we're putting large amounts of money in it because we have such a huge unfunded liability, that that money could be not counted towards the two and a half. That would be a huge breather for us. Would also encourage towns across the Commonwealth to start setting up these trust funds and start putting away for our OPEB liability. We fortunately have not gone underwater, like some towns already have, where there are more retirees and active employees. We're still more active employees than retirees, but every year it's growing, we will pass that marker in a foreseeable future. Another thing is, we had CPC, where money is matched. If the town, if the Commonwealth could match a small amount of the money that we put away, it would encourage us also to do it, but it would also help just nudge us closer towards being able to fund that, because right now, there is no vehicle. The towns are just trying to figure out how to do it, and the best way to do it. Right now, it's not counted on our accounting sheets, but I understand GASP is seriously considering putting that in, and then all these towns are going to be underwater. You gave us tools to handle the healthcare a few years back, and that was a lifesaver for us. We need tools to handle the OPEB and to handle the pension. The pension's out of our hands, it's handled by regional boards, and even though we know how far behind we are in funding, there's nothing we can do as a town. We just have to go along with the ride. So if you could start giving us some local tools, and I don't even know what they would be, to be able to start handling that problem, because the healthcare's growing, but the pension and the OPEB is just this huge shadow that's just ready to come down and crush us. And so we have so many different things, four different items we've talked about here, that it's going to be a very, very challenging next 10 years.
Yeah, Tom, if I could. We could just wait and see if there's other folks who haven't spoken yet. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet who'd like to say anything?
I was just going to piggyback on what Marie said. In terms of specifically for pension, you know, the private sector has moved almost entirely from defined benefits to a defined contribution plan. Just that move alone by the state saying that they'll move to a defined contribution plan and get out of defined benefits, even convert over, that alone would be phenomenal for us. But yet, we're locked, I mean, you know, municipal governments are still locked into defined benefits plans, and it's just not viable anymore when people are living the lives they're living.
No point in taking.
Okay. Are there any other, oh, well, we'll give Stephen and then Maury. We haven't seen you yet.
So I just want to, thank you guys, and I think you did a good job kind of laying out what things that we can do to help you, when, you know, we don't know what acts are being filed and what the impact could be to us. And so when you, you've done a good job kind of laying out some of the examples of things that happened, and I think if you do let us know, hey, listen, there's going to be a hearing on a local option gas tax bill, I think, I think you're right, I think you're hearing broad support for myself, the chairs issuing a letter, basically saying, you know, we can certainly have done this in the past, get you a quick letter saying, please, you know, we support this legislation for, you know, this reason. I think the big thing is, you know, and Mark made the expert last time we had this joint meeting, the, you know, we want the million dollar solutions, but, you know, the, we only have the tools to grab, to get to $1,100 at a time. And I think that, you know, when you take like a, say, millionaire's tax, when you take a new revenue source, I mean, I think we'd like to have a new revenue source that, using the LEAF gas station as a model, it doesn't, still land on the 5,800 households in Long Meadow. But if you come up with something, and you allocate it through some formula to education and infrastructure, theoretically, we could take the money that we spend according to policy, either by state mandate for education, or by local policy to maintain our infrastructure, and supplement, or supplant even.
Right.
With funds generated by the state for those purposes, and then those funds could be used to offset increases in health insurance, which are beyond our control, or other areas that are things we can't, you know, or to save services. And I think that's not, you know, that's a bit of a Band-Aid approach, but I think that's the short, in the short term, barring some large-scale legislative or constitutional change, we need to cobble together a few of those, and still push for the larger structural changes that we need. It's not an either-or, and I think that that's, I think, my takeaway from this, that you've laid out, that there are two paths, and you have to follow both. So thank you for that.
And one of the things we should have mentioned, too, that Long Meadow jumped on was the community compact.
Yeah.
Just another small revenue gain that, I think, out of the 351 towns, I think there are up to like 330 across the Commonwealth have signed up. But it just gives the town of Long Meadow, working with the governor's office, opportunity to apply for specific grants based on best practices, which I think it was maybe almost a year ago, Long Meadow signed up for.
Couple of years ago, and I.
Yeah. And that's a positive thing, going along with the community preservation.
And the CPC.
All these little things that, they're not going to solve the budget problems, but each one of them can help in the short term until we can try to find a longer-term solution.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just even thinking in my head as we do this, like, we have a, we had a bill on the registry of deeds fees for CP, you know, to fully fund CPC, which would be a huge, a huge win for Long Meadow and for communities like Long Meadow. You know, that's just another discreet example of a bill that got actually a decent amount of traction. We should probably check into where it is.
Hopefully, yeah, next time.
Yeah, and next time we can get over the finish line. I just do want to thank, for the record, I want to publicly thank just the whole town government, the school committee, and the board of selectmen. I do want to publicly thank your town manager, Stephen Crane. You guys have been really fantastic to work with on a whole variety of items. We haven't even discussed the railroad crossing issues, and, you know, an issue came up during the budget, the foundation issues, an issue came up during the budget around the ambulance fees, which was, I think, a good example of us working together, talk about town finances, to protect a kind of a very substantial threat to the community's well-being. So I just, I do want to thank, it's easy in sessions like this for it to become sort of negative, but I, the town is really, has fantastic leadership, and we really enjoy working with you, and have worked together, I think, on quite a lot of different things, that touch a lot of different policy areas, and obviously will continue to do that. But I just wanted the record to state that. So when we call you tomorrow morning for something else, Stephen.
Okay. And so you probably want to wrap this up, but I want to give Maury, I guess, the last word.
I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, again, Representative Ashen, Senator Lush, I wanted to thank you, reiterate what the town manager said, for, I mean, I found your presentation very helpful. I just wanted to make sure that the message from your presentation, I had to clear in my mind, so when I go back to my committee, I can talk, but there has been a lot of hopeful optimism about legislative relief, big-ticket legislative relief for some of these budgetary stressors. And it sounds, at least my takeaway from your gentleman's remarks today, was not so much that you're on your own, that you want to help, but the big-ticket legislative relief is long-term. And when we're talking about the next couple of years, the next five years, the next 10 years, that as a community, we really need to be looking, you talked about town fiscal policy, and ways to generate revenue on a local level. And it sounds like that that really is the big takeaway message from your presentation. Yes, we can push for these larger legislative statewide solutions, but they are not the kind of thing that we should be hoping for or depending on in the short term, talking the next five or 10 years, that really we need to bear down and figure out local solutions for our budgetary stressors in the short term.
I think that's largely right. The one caveat I would give is that the fair share amendment is on the ballot this year. So that is going to be voted on by the voters November of 2018, and the estimates are between $1.1 to $2 billion. It's a very big window, but over, over a billion in new revenue would come from that, and that is a very immediate item. It's going to be on the ballot in November.
That's the millionaire's.
Yeah, fair share, yeah. So, but aside from that, the others are longer term.
Right. I think you put it pretty much how we.
Thank you again.
And I just wanted to mention that, I don't know if you may have had it on your agenda before, the crumbling foundation, that where, I know, I'm not sure who, Stephen, I think, is going next week.
This is a good time.
Yeah, Congressman Neal and the IRS, and hopefully, I don't know how many people in town it impacts, but obviously, that's a serious issue, and we're trying to do everything we can to come to some sort of understanding of how we can help these unfortunate people who are put in that position.
Yeah, so for, on January 25th, Congressman Neal is having a meeting, he's invited, I think, most of us are on the select board, I know that.
And we'll, well, he'll be there.
Yeah, I'm supposed to be in session, unfortunately, but Michael, Michael will be there.
And I think the IRS will be there, or somebody from the IRS. So trying to at least get a solid plan in place to see what can be done to remedy, to, you know, help try to make whole, or as close to whole again, as many people as possible, obviously. It's one of the things that, I don't think anybody has that in their plan book of how to fix something like that, because I've never heard of any issue like that, so. But hopefully, we can come to something that will help people here.
Okay, yeah, thanks for mentioning, yes.
Again, I, please indulge.
It is a new subject.
With respect to the foundation issue, I actually would like to hear, you know, what your representative and senator, what your understanding is of the situation, because of the tremendous impact that the property values have on our tax revenue.
Right.
And the detrimental effect that a large decrease in property values due to a, due to the foundation issues affecting or forcing property values down the town would have. So I just.
I'm certainly not an expert on this issue by any means, but it came to my attention last year, Representative, a state rep from Connecticut called my office, kind of give a heads up, this is an issue that's going on, and I think it'll impact some of your residents in Long Meadow. For those people at home who may or may not know what this is, a builder had built a certain amount of properties where the foundation started to crumble after a certain amount of years, well before anything should have happened, and that contractor is no longer in business, so people were left with a huge problem on their hand with their foundation. It impacted several homes in Long Meadow. I know I have one constituent in East Long Meadow, as well as, you know, the Enfield, greater Enfield area. Since then, I think most people had no idea, you know, where to go with this, or how do you remedy a situation where the person responsible, you can no longer go after him and really get anything. So that's, I think, when, myself, the senator's office, Congressman Neal's office, getting the IRS, to see if there is any way to try to make this whole again, or find a solution to all these homeowners. I mean, it's nothing, you can't just go down there and patch up these foundations, these are foundations that are falling apart, where the homes will actually have to be lifted, repair the entire foundation. So this isn't a simple, call your local contractor, have them come in, take a few bricks or a few cinder blocks out, patch them up. This is something where the foundations are dangerous and will continue to deteriorate, they won't just get better on their own. So this is a huge undertaking, and I mean, I don't have an answer of what they're going to do, or what solution we're going to come up with, but I think the best thing we can do is, like, we're having the meeting next week at Congressman Neal's office, to get everybody that has, besides the homeowners, get everybody that has some sort of stock and a reason to want to get this done, get them together and try to collectively, and that's why the IRS will be there as well, to see what can we do. What can we do within the law, and what can we do, you know, whether it's through the insurance, through the IRS, or somehow to make sure these people, I mean, most people that I know don't have the funds on their own where they can just fix this. I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to, you know, lift the home, replace the entire foundation. So, I mean, it's still kind of premature to say what the solution will be, but having everybody in the same room at the same time, with the same idea of what the outcome we want, I think, is the best start we could ask for. Well, it isn't even a start, we're, well, we're starting.
Hey, that's clear, thank you.
Brian, do you think the state will be providing funds to help homeowners test the concrete in their homes?
That's something that's definitely viable. I mean, I can't say they will, but I mean, that's something we could ask for. I don't know if there'll be federal funds available, I'm not sure where it would fall under, but absolutely, that's something that, when we get a clearer picture of how many people this impacts, what kind of funds we're looking at, you know, that's something absolutely a senator and myself could work on to see if there is a possibility of giving some sort of aid to, whether it's the community or the individuals themselves.
Well, Richard Foster has done a lot of counting, right? To kind of figure out.
We're starting to count.
We could get Richard to help build these properties.
I wished I had the business.
Of properties, it was, was it 800?
Oh, it's, we're just starting, but that's only, that's only people that had worked on it, there's.
I think it was built, what was it, after, like, between 1983, '81 to?
83.
83, okay.
But we might want to add, there's going to be absolutely no way to prove this without testing.
Right, exactly, and that's.
Yeah, and it's.
And that's possibly something we can, you know, see if there's any way to get funding available to people.
If your house falls down tonight, and it was bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom, if I could just weigh in momentarily, and I do want to thank Representative and Senator for their efforts on this, and for helping get us to the federal level. You know, we have spent some time doing some research after Russ brought it to our attention locally, unfortunately for him. And I think, as Russ's personal experience will tell you, even if there's a limited number of homeowners impacted, the impact of those homeowners is life-altering.
Oh, absolutely.
And I think one of the things we're trying to do is figure out, either through testing or through just data collection, how can we define the scope of the problem? I mean, there's certainly the potential for a large number, but I think, you know, the reality is, it's probably a smaller number than the outside potential, which is the first thing we did, how many homes were built in this town, and that, I mean, it's going to be obviously a much smaller number. We, you know, had some anecdotal information from people who are in that line of work, who say that they don't remember with that many cases, but you really need to go and get the records from the home builders, the foundation subcontractors, I don't know if Moat is. I don't know if Modus, J.J. Modus, which is the quarry, has this issue, and then even after that, you know, even if you figure out, it's only, I don't know, regionally, 100 homes. Not every home's going to be impacted.
Right.
As, as Russ will tell you, it was a certain, there's a level of randomness to him discovering this and, and having the impact, and that's the other part of this, it's how, how can you test for it, and the testing, is the testing really at a level of, at a level of accuracy where people are going to know? And these are things we're all trying to find out, and the folks in Connecticut are ahead of us on understanding the technical aspects, and that's the information I hope we can gain from these discussions.
So it's a, it's a horrific issue, and it's something myself and my whole office has been engaged in for several months. You know, just to reiterate, you know, Rep, Rep Ash's point, you know, we're united and trying to figure out a solution to this, but I don't want to sugarcoat the situation we have. We met and reached out with the Attorney General's office. The issue is, is that the, the home insurance companies, rather cynically, in my opinion, had homeowners sign riders that basically said that they would only cover the full collapse of the building, but not partial collapse. They basically view partial collapse as maintenance, and they don't fund maintenance, they fund destruction of the home. So what that means, in a kind of roundabout, kind of upside-down world, is, is if you let the home collapse on itself, the insurance company will step in and, and fund the restoration, but if you preemptively try to stop or fix the foundation, they view that as maintenance. That is obviously not my position, but we met directly with the, with the industry representatives from the, the Homeowners Insurance Association in the state, and they explained this to us, and they're not budging from that position. We have talked to, and we're engaged with the Attorney General about potentially a consumer protection violation, or some other legal means, but it's going to be uphill because of how those policies were structured. Another avenue we explored was, we, we met with the, the Insurance Commissioner, the State Insurance Commissioner, which regulates the homeowners' insurance companies, and they scrubbed the policies, they looked at what happened, they talked to their counterparts in Connecticut, and again, they faced this issue around the plans. Now, if you go back and you look at what happened in Connecticut, around 2002, 2003, 2004, the homeowners' insurance plan started changing. They used to not include these riders, and then they started adding the riders. And what we're trying to get to the bottom of is how and why that changed. They claim it was a national association that was not involved in the discrete issues here, that recommended the change, who knows? But there has been some very limited success at settlements in Connecticut for homeowners that had the, that, that had the plans before the riders were added, if that makes sense. After the riders were added, there's been very limited success. So then, after we went through the, the set of meetings and engagements around the homeowners' insurance, we thought about, well, what about Modus, the concrete company? And the issue here is both a statute of limitations issue because of how long it was, but it does seem to me like a kind of classic products liability issue, you had defective concrete. The, the impurity is apparently so rare that there's basically no other, it's so rare that they didn't even test it, and it wasn't within the industry standard to test it at the time this happened. And as far as we know, it's been limited to this one company, J.J. Modus, and this one quarry. We've learned a lot about concrete in the process of researching this, but the other issue is, is one potentially piece of good news for us is that they basically are limited to a 90-minute radius around the quarry, because, because it's a mixing truck, and the concrete starts to harden after they go more than 90 minutes. So the scope is hopefully more limited than a kind of limitless potential for the whole state. This is a long lay of saying, where they landed in Connecticut, where there were hundreds, potentially thousands of homes impacted after a multi-month, over-a-year issue, and I spoke directly to the Connecticut Lieutenant Governor about the issue, spoke to the Senate Majority Leader in Connecticut about the issue, spoke to our local counterparts right across the border. And where they basically settled in Connecticut is they passed a state bond, and are now basically doing a bailout-style assistance program, pulling, you know, drawing from the bond, from the bond revenue, and then the hope is, is that they'll obviously be able to repay the bond over time. We're still in a, in a information gathering phase, so we don't necessarily know whether that, that solution fits in Massachusetts.
I think we get better numbers, too, whether it's 50, 100.
So it depends on the scale, it depends on the number of homes, it depends on a whole lot of things, our meeting with, you know, the meeting with Congressman Neal to figure out the federal angle. But we're, you know, 100% committed to doing everything that we can, but it's, it would, we just, it's important that we not create a false sense of this is easily solved, because, because it's not. And, and, and we have the example ultimately in Connecticut, but the Connecticut case was much, much, much more widespread, and included, it included thousands of, of people. So luckily, there's a lot of people and resources engaged on it. I do think we should continue to notify the community, people should get tested. We've had constituents ask us who are thinking about buying homes, and what I've recommended to people is, is to make sure you have a good house inspector.
Right, that's aware of the situation.
That's aware of it, and, and I guess we'll probably report back. I guess a lot of the select board members are coming in the meeting, but we'll, we'll report back after we, you know, after we have the meeting on a federal level.
One real quick one. And you may not know, we're going to be asking, do you have any idea what's involved in mandate and disclosure for the real estate firms?
Oh, I, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know offhand.
Okay, because homes are still being sold.
Right. Yeah, I, I don't know, that's something we'll bring up at the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I'll bring it up, too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, the Realtors Association is aware.
Right.
And we've, we've talked to them, as far as their professional obligations and, and what they're, I, I can't comment on that, I don't, I don't know them offhand.
Okay.
Yeah.
Russ, did you want to?
Well, I was going to say that I, so I have a new neighbor that just bought in December, nobody told them about the issue, and my article came out the next day.
His house also?
Well, who knows?
Probably don't know.
I mean, the reality is, if you're not testing when you're buying something after '83 around here, Summers, Connecticut has one of the highest percentages of houses that have.
Right.
East Long Meadows, right up the road from there, and we're not that far behind. And, and the builder I have, I called an attorney in Springfield to talk about suing the insurance companies, and his house was built by the same builder I have, and he had the same issue. That's how he got involved in this.
Okay.
And so I think what's going to happen slowly over time is people will, it's going to happen when there's an exchange of homes. That's when it's going to come out. So I don't think you will get a lot of calls from people, because until they buy a house not knowing about the issue, which this is going to become an issue, I think.
Or they don't see it, right.
Or, because you can't see it, I mean, his house has maybe 1% of the basement's not finished, my house had none, so until you have like a leak like I had, you would never know.
Or your doors quit shutting.
Yeah. But the problem, the problem with that is the insurance companies also say, you have an obligation to fix the issue, otherwise, we're not going to cover when it collapses.
Right.
So you're in a catch-22, you can't.
Absolutely.
You have no way to do anything about this. So ultimately, the state bailing out homeowners is fine, but I really think this insurance companies, you know, when that rider happened, did they lower the premiums for everybody? Did they tell everybody, you know, this is, we're taking this out, but here's a rider where you can go get it, like, I have earthquake insurance for my house, and I can get a rider for that, but I can't get a rider for this, so it's a known problem. I mean, they say it could be like 34,000 houses in Connecticut. Now, out of that number, there's only, you know, a few thousand, I believe, that have actually tested and know for sure they have it, but I don't know what the solution is. I mean, Senator Lesser and I have talked a lot, and it's difficult, because nobody's going to come forward until they have to.
Right, absolutely, right.
All right, well, I'd like to conclude this part of the meeting, but again, I can't thank you enough, it's really nice having two full-time professionals in, I'd just like to, here to, to help us along with this discussion. I think this is a pretty stimulating discussion, but I'm sure we're all tired of it at this point. I don't know, Michelle, do you have anything to add?
No, I think the only thing I would ask right now is, I know it's difficult for us all to get together, and I think at the, the close of the last meeting, we had hoped to try to get moving on a task force or have that happen, and at this point, we still haven't done that. So is there any, you know, if there's, if there's consensus in the room to form a task force so that we aren't the only people working on this right now, I'd say, let's try to get that started and move that along.
Okay, I mean, what do other folks think? Do you feel that we have enough of a, a focus of what the task force would do that you'd like to move forward? I'm seeing some heads shaking on that side and, and this side also? Okay, so I guess what we would ask, so you're basically asking for a motion?
I think that we'd like.
A task force, yeah?
Yes. So move. I'd like to make a motion to form a task force in order to focus on the $25 tax limit, and with the goals and to be defined at a later date, or we can define them right now.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. Any other discussion on the task force motion? Okay. And so, or we can, do we need to discuss membership at all at this point, or we just, we could pass it and then set up a meeting date, I guess?
I, I think.
Figure it out from there, right? Take it one step at a time like that? Does that sound appropriate? Well, okay, if we have too many, we'll, we'll get to, we'll figure that out. I, I don't think too many is going to be the problem, because it's a big job. Okay, so all those in favor of organizing this task force? Okay, all those opposed? No one? Okay, so, so another thing you helped us with is to move forward on the task force.
Witness that in action, too.
And I thank the school board for attending this meeting, and your contributions, and we'll take a five-minute break.
Tom, before, Tom, before you break.
Oh, yeah.
It may be of value, since you've got the whole group assembled, to see what kind of interest there is on the participants that would like to serve on that task force. You don't have to form them now, but just see what the, what the general makeup is.
Sure.
I mean, you're, then you're going to know if you got a problem. If you only have one person, you don't have a task force, you have an individual.
Well, I'm sitting next to two women here who are, like, they're gone, they're gone home, huh?
Well, I, I, my hope was to get some people from outside of our committee.
Well, that's true, but you, you're going to still need some drivers from in here, because these, these people understand the, the full essence of the problem.
Okay, so, so you want to know, besides yourself?
I didn't know, I don't want to. No, I'm, I'm way too busy. But I just thought it might be nice if you surveyed the groups, see if there's people that are interested, that way you know what you got.
Okay.
You're going to start to build it.
So, I, I, last time, I was, so, yes, interested, anybody want to speak up? Interested.
I don't know if they can hear it, Tom.
I don't.
Okay.
Okay, Marie and Mark?
Marie and Mark.
How about school thing?
Depending when it is, when the meeting could be, I'd be interested in the topic.
Okay.
But I have a few things going on right now, so I'd have to weigh that out, but.
Okay, but you, like, at some level of participation, anyways.
I would, I would like to be if I can fit it in.
Okay.
So there's Mark and Marie.
Certainly.
Russ?
Other members, but if they have more availability than task force.
Okay. Startings?
Maybe somebody on the Finance Committee?
So, that's interesting, we're actually precluded by the charter.
Oh.
And that was, I've actually put that question to the Charter Committee specifically. We had a lengthy discussion about that, and it's, the conclusion we reached was that the Finance Committee is precluded from serving on other committees precisely to maintain objectivity and the lack of appearance of any conflict of interest.
Yep, but, but if it's a task force and not a town committee?
No, that, that's, that is a distinction, not a difference. And it, it, that violates the spirit of the Charter.
That makes sense.
I mean, we'd love to, I'd like to observe, or a member of the committee to observe, but in terms of actually serving on the task force, the Finance Committee has to maintain its objectivity.
Okay, so then, as it is, we have two folks who have ready to make the commitment, and hopefully we can generate some.
Anybody from school, Russ, is there anyone from schools?
We've got, Russ, I, I would, I would see if anybody else from the committee would be interested before I take that place, but I know we'll need representation on it, so we'll find 22 members.
That'd be great. Yes, Marie?
I also wanted to say something, is that I'm a non-voting member of the Scantic Valley. I go to the Health Insurance Trust, and it's really interesting, they, they take input, and if anyone from the school committee is interested in attending some of those meetings, I think it would be, it's an important part of the budget, it'd be interesting to have them come, and you might be able to have something you want to suggest on changes in the healthcare.
Okay.
I will let you know when those meetings are, great, okay?
Because they offer the insurance coverage for Tom, who plays. Okay, all right, so we still have time for at least a four-minute break, and we'll start at half past.
Wait, Tom, just, I didn't, I hesitated to do this while they were here on camera, because I, I know both of their staff people, and I didn't want to get myself in trouble with them, but I did ask Representative Ash and Senator Lesser if they could have, they could designate a staff person to participate in task force meetings and help guide that conversation and keep that level of integration, and they both volunteered their people.
Oh, well, that's good news. So we've doubled our membership with this meeting?
And Michael just went, "Boo."
All right.
I'm not going to lie, he wasn't happy.
Okay, I need to move to a three-minute break.
Thank you. Here's your pen.
Okay, welcome back to the Select Board meeting. We will continue with a presentation on the senior center, Stephen, you want to, no, you want to introduce this?
DPW.
DPW presentation, oh, yes.
Yes, so we have a representative from Weston and Sampson here with us tonight, and they are going to be presenting basically a more intelligent and better-sounding version of what I presented at the last Select Board meeting, with some updates on our permitting process. So I guess I would turn it over to JP and Mike.
Thank you. Again, my name is Mike Richard, project manager with Weston and Sampson, and this is JP Parnas, I'm leading architect on the project. What I plan to present, I gave an outline of, it's just a general update of where we are and where we're going in this process. And to help us understand that, the first thing I have on this outline is the schedule overview. So where we are right now is, we're very close to having a complete set of construction documents that will go out to the, for published bid. We're more than halfway through that process right now. We are scheduled to send out for a second independent estimate sometime next week, and I'll get into a little bit of, of the estimate process in a little bit. Plans are scheduled to be sent to contractors on February, February 15th, or just there about. We're going to be opening the filed sub bids, that's electrical, plumbing, other filed sub bids, right around March 8th, and we'll be opening general contractors' bids right around March 22nd, and we'll be kicking off the project somewhere around mid-April. I call it a construction meeting, doesn't mean they'll be breaking ground at that time, but right around that, we'll probably get the contractor in to go through the, the process with them.
Do we get to hold shovels at that point?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
So I talked a little bit about the estimate. What we did is, at various spots along the way, we, we send out to an independent estimator the plans of what we've done so far. And, and back in, our last deliverable was November 17th, and we took those plans, we sent them to the independent estimator, and we got our estimate back somewhere in, in December. And at that point, the project we estimated to be $1.1 million over the construction budget. Now, that might be alarming, it was alarming to us, and, but there's actually a silver lining to it, in the sense that it's early in the process. We have identified this, and now we can make adjustments. And what we call those adjustments is, we call them value engineering. But before I get into that, some of the key explanation for those cost increases is, we have some HVAC improvements, and those are, to get us to, we're striving for zero net energy building, some of those improvements are reimbursable, so that's, that's encouraging there. Some of those improvements are reimbursable, so that's encouraging there. Also, along with that, we did some further testing of the existing buildings that were there on site. We found asbestos in the tennis club floor. That was something, we weren't privy to do destructive testing before taking over that property. So, we did find some asbestos in the tennis club floor that's going to have to be remediated. The other thing that we found is that the forced main out on the streets there is going to require fire protection pump in a fire protection room. And that change is not just the pump that's involved, it's a fire-rated room. There's other requirements in terms of the generator and the transformer, et cetera, that have to be addressed. We did, through the course of the design, as we get into it, into the details, and laying out the columns, laying out the spaces, et cetera, there was a modest increase to the building as well. And then there's the unforeseen market conditions. Back when we were pricing this out originally, back, you know, sometime, almost a year ago, actually, it was about a year ago now, we were seeing the market increase, but I don't know that we expected it increasing at the rate that it's increased. We did have a project that was bid in April of last year, and it bid in, it came in at, I think it was like a 340 a square foot. Two months later, we had one that came in at 360 a square foot. So, we don't know if that's an anomaly or not. We hope it's not. We hope we find a more stable market when we put this project up to bid. So, those are, all those costs are carried through this, what we call, design development estimate. So, to be sure, I mean, the key here is we want to make sure that we bring this project in on budget, and that the town has a project that they can award, and a project that they, that they'll be happy with. So, one thing we did is we reduced the building footprint, and that's what's shown up here on the side, on the, on the plan here. I give to you in handout. And essentially, what we did here is, we didn't reduce it by this green space, or this green space or that. What we did is we cut a little bit from each space, and if you want to talk details, JP can talk to that. But basically, just by cutting a little bit here, a little bit here, and a little bit from these spaces, we're able to save a pretty significant dollar amount for the town, without impacting their operations. Also, what we did is, we've taken a closer look at the site layout, and we're really encouraged with the parking, I'm sorry, pavement, that here is an aqua that you see here. We're able to reduce those, and we're encouraged by that, but as we start looking into it further, we found out that the cost savings with reducing that was much greater than we thought. You know, we're reducing the site lighting, we're reducing the curving, the grading. There's a retaining wall on site that also gets reduced, et cetera. So that was another significant savings as well. And then also, what we also have is, we're also carrying a fairly large escalation in design contingency, design and pricing contingency at this point, about $250,000, I'm sorry, we're carrying over $500,000 for that. We feel we can cut that, because at this point, the project is just about out to bid. So we could probably cut about another $250 from that as well.
That's not showing here, though, is it?
That is showing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, excuse me, I saw.
Yep, yep. And with that, we're pretty much up to that one point, we've pretty much recovered that 1.1 million. And then if we were able to get that zero net energy building grant funding, that's somewhere about $150,000, $250,000. And then, just to be certain that we get the bids into something that's, that can be worked, what we can do is we could put in a couple of bid alternates. Bid alternates is something that goes in the bid to the contractor, but not necessarily awarded to them.
You still have $250 left on the contingency?
We still have $250 left on, in excess of $250 left on that contingency.
Okay.
Yep. And there's an additional contingency above that, too.
Right.
For construction.
For construction, correct. So, through the bid alternates, I feel like we should be able to get a favorable bid price. And if the bids come in very favorable to the town, the alternates get reworked back into the contract. So I think we're in a pretty good situation.
Obviously, you get a CO with all these alternates not active. You can still get a CO without these in the picture.
Absolutely, absolutely correct. And so, something like the fuel line and canopy, it's a nice-to-have, especially where you have, you know, you have police and fire also using this, the fuel station. You're not required to have a canopy, it's a nice-to-have. But what we can do in that case is, we can put the foundations in for the canopy. So that way, when the funding becomes available, if it's not, you can always add that in at a later date. Fire suppression, because you're a municipality, fire suppression on the canopy is not required. Fire chief said he'd like to have it in, if the budget allows.
Okay, Mark, oh.
Yeah, a couple of questions. One is, and maybe Stephen, this is for you more than for you, Mike. This is, how and who, or who and how, do these contingencies, or more importantly, the bid alternates get released? Is this the permanent building committee, by a majority vote, who will bid to release?
To determine the alternates?
No, no, well, hate to determine them, but also to release them. And especially contingencies, when the Longmont High School was built, that was a major issue of how and when, and by whom those approvals were made. And in fact, because of the system that was set up, it saves the town a whole, a great deal of money, in my opinion, so.
So, to answer that question, Mark, the permanent building committee will probably review and make recommendations to the select board, or to me. But the, under public construction law, they get awarded in order. So the town and the bid package has to prioritize the bid alternates. And so if you have bid alternates one, two, and three, and then the bids come back favorable, and you have funding for two of the three.
They go in that order?
You go one and two, you can't go two and three.
Okay, and I get that. More importantly, though, Stephen, it's the, it's both the construction contingency and this $250,000 contingency. When things come up, and there's a recommendation, I assume, in the architect and the design?
Do you mean change orders, right, Mark?
Yeah, change orders. You know, who approves the change orders? And personally, I think that ought to be the purview of the building committee. I think that's my sense of what the building committee does, as opposed to, you know, you guys say, we need to do it, it's in the budget, let's just do it. I think the town.
We've also got a project manager on this, too, the OPM.
We have an authorized project manager. I think in that case, the permanent building committee would then make a recommendation to me, and then I would, and then we would, I would report it back here.
Can I suggest that the OPM make the recommendation to the permanent building committee?
Correct.
Who then?
Decides they like it or don't like it, right?
Right.
Or as a team, I mean, as a team, as a project manager, I mean, it's a team approach, and we would discuss these with the permanent building committee. It's different than the high school.
Well, I understand.
It's a whole, you have to put that out of your mind, in terms of the project.
All I'm saying is, though, that what I'll call civilian review through the building, worked well. And I'd like to see some, personally, I'd like to see some version of that used in order to make sure that there's a wide support for, you know, any of the contingency changes, or, you know, questioning the contingencies, what else have we tried, how else can we do, whatever it is. And that's my only point. We're talking about, between the two, besides the $250,000, you have, I think I saw, $800,000 in the overall budget. So there's $1.05 million. I mean, so, you know, that's a lot of money, if you can use it judiciously.
So I just, you know, you get relatively detailed there, I just want to be clear. On the high school, MSBA, the school building committee, which is the civilian review you're referring to, was given the authority to sign those documents, make those changes. Actually, I signed all the change order stuff, but, and I will on this one, too, because I signed, that's my, I signed the contracts. But they were given the authority by state statute to make those decisions, to take those votes. Our setup for this project with the permanent building committee is different. It's not given that authority by state statute. They're a locally appointed committee. But I agree that the civilian review process, and having those discussions with the permanent building committee, and getting their input on it, is what we visualize, is what we envisioned when we appointed the committee. I just want to make sure we're talking apples, apples and oranges, or whatever it is. They don't vote to make decisions, they just discuss, review, advise, and ask the challenging questions. And they can vote on recommendations, but they don't have statutory authority, like the school building committee did.
Well, we could apply whatever authority we want to that group, though. Right, they don't have statutory authority.
That's all I'm saying, is they don't have statutory authority.
But there, Stephen, I hear you. There are three, maybe there are 3,000, but three quick ways I can think of to approve requests for change orders, or requests for contingencies. And one is, you know, just say, hey, if you think it needs to be done, you're the architect, you're the OPM, whatever, you do it. The other is to say, everything comes before the select board, pretty current some to my mind. Or the select board, you know, delegates that to somebody like the permanent building committee. You know, now, there may be other ways, but to me, those three seem to make a whole lot of sense. And only because, you know, we meet different times and infrequently in the permanent building. Permanent building committee needs 48 hours notice to meet, you know, it makes more sense for us to delegate to them. That's all I'm saying. And if we think that's not going to happen, we're kidding ourselves. You know that there are going to be times when somebody's going to say, we came across such and such, you know. I'll give you a perfect example of the high school. We had two drawings where two things hit. Something had to give, you know, because we didn't draw, build the 3D model. And it's decision of how to best do that, it was actually the ceiling in the cafeteria, which is, and it was a major change of a significant, this, I think, before you came to town, Stephen. And the solution that came through the school building committee was far more acceptable, and a whole lot cheaper than was initially recommended to the town. And I'm just, and it's not because they were any experts, but they took a lot of time and thought through it.
And I do see the permanent building committee following that role, but if there's a decision needs to be made in the field, it's not like the school, only the school building committee, sorry.
Yeah, what I would say is, I can't comment on statutes, what's required, but I can tell you what we've seen before. I've never seen a project, an engineer approve a change order authorizing a contractor to go ahead and do the work. It has to be approved by the.
We sign off on it, but it's the town that approves the actual change order.
But the word "the town" is very, very nebulous.
It could be, yes.
And so, I'm trying to pin down what we, because in theory, the town could be the train, it could be the select board, and it could be a vote of town residents, or anything in between, and I don't think we want any of those two.
I would suggest to have, to be able to have the discretion to determine which, what change orders would be appropriate to be reviewed by a larger committee, and what ones aren't. I mean, you might have a change order because a sink was wrong, and it might be a $1,000 change order. Do you really want every one of those to go through that process?
I think the school building could, you had thresholds.
No, they did, they went through all of them.
I think there were thresholds that went back to the full committee, and then others had.
The chair, I think, the chair could act on some of them.
Right. And again, our role is to serve the town, for sure.
Right.
We review those change orders with exact, very sharp pencils.
I only want a four, five, whatever, four voices here, but I think we, I'd like to see that pinned down now, so that when you get to it, it rolls very quickly.
No, you're absolutely right to address it now, and I don't think, I don't think you necessarily need the solution tonight. But it's definitely good to have that conversation. And usually, usually what we see is a dollar threshold, and the dollar threshold can be, you know, if it's below a certain dollar value, it can be approved by, and the last project I was on is actually the DPW directed, but it could be the town manager. If it was above that, it had to go to, it had to go to the building committee or the board of select. So it's a good idea to have that discussion, and sooner rather than later, because you don't want to be waiting on a $1,000 change order in a whole bunch of projects, while you have to figure that out. But we do have a little time to work on that. Okay?
Yeah, a little caution, I might have a look at the major, you know, outline of the footprint and the, sort of the in-road, and goes around. Is there going to be access, like, is there going to be a flat area where there's not paved, where people, like, as if the town, you know, pick up something that needed to be dropped off, not on blacktop, but on earth? You know, is there going to be an open, flat area?
Well, this area, this area right here, over me, this is where the existing building is right now, unfortunately, the building. So this will end up relatively flat back there, in the area.
In the area, okay, all right, because I mean, I would think you'd want a space like that, and I just didn't see it, so.
I was just going to ask, you know, it looks like the, what I'll call the garage part has been reused, that's the other part, has been reused a little bit in size. I assume that was done in conjunction with the equipment we have, knowing that the equipment will still fit, there's just going to be a little bit less room behind them, or room in front of them?
Yes, yes, exactly. And part of that is just actually not reducing, a portion of that is reducing just the drive aisle width.
Okay. Because a large part of this, in my mind, justification was, get everything inside, and I wouldn't want it.
Absolutely, we didn't want to compromise that, yep. So, as I said before, we're getting to the stage where we're going to send the plans back out for the independent estimator, and just verify that we are back on track, so. And we do, we do have some other creative ways that we've identified, should not work out. We do have some other ways that we've identified that we can make, in terms of combining stairs, et cetera, that might be able to work.
And as we develop the design, you know, further, and construction details, we're always keeping in mind the budget. There's things that might not necessarily show up in the estimate that we, but we know, that are simplifying certain things that will come out in the bids.
So one of the items on here is the demo of a current DPW facility on Pond Side Road.
Yes.
Although I was the one who said it needs to be included in this, in this project, you know, at some point, you know, how do we determine? Look, we can pay for that next year, try to get a supplemental bonding for it, or something like that, because we don't want a value engineer anymore than, I mean, there are things that we can, in fact, defer from this. And I guess the question for us is, how do we determine when that time comes? And I presume that that expenditure is going to be the very last money we spend, that's part of this project, because you can't demo that until you're ready to move into someplace else. But I think people need to understand that there's, you know, there's a lot of opportunities here to potentially say, you know, like the canopy for the gas station, you know, we can put on the canopy for the gas station three, four, or five years from now, as long as the footings are in, and save some money.
Right.
As part of our capital project.
Yeah. I think that's right. I mean, the existing facility, when we talked about this at length. Well, no, I mean, it's what's underneath, and it's the permit, it's right now what's underneath, and we have a good sense of what's underneath. The DEP's been involved with the site for a long time. It's the permitting process for landfill closure that is lengthy and can be expensive. And we do need to do some demolition and move some earth to figure out what the full extent of that is going to be. And as I've said repeatedly, we're not really going to know until they're out and we get into that. And so you're right, there may be parts of this where we just say, well, we're just going to have to hold off, or we're going to need more money for this, because this unknown condition came up, or something, but you're right, that's going to be the end.
So, moving away, so one of the other steps that we're in right now is we're in permitting, and we've been through the conservation commission, and we have received our order of conditions. So that, that part of the project is all set. We're also, what I would say is, two-thirds of the way through site plan review. I think we've got one more hearing, hearing to go. So that's under progress, that's in progress, I should say. And the zoning board of appeals is just getting underway. So, so we're in the middle of the permitting process. Just to clarify, for zoning board of appeals, we're going for two things. One, it's the fence height. We like six-foot-high fence in what's called the secondary setback. Secondary setback is that distance between the, between the street line and the rear of the building. So, so the zoning bylaw requires no higher than a four-foot-tall fence. We would like a six-foot-tall fence for both security and safety purposes. And the other one is the height of salt shed. And the height of the salt shed, I think, is a key one for environmental purposes. It allows the trucks delivering, the tractor-trailers delivering the salt loads, to be tipped right inside the building, instead of outside the building. So, from an environmental standpoint, I think that is clearly the way the industry is moving. I think that's a good one. I think that's a good one, and you can't see, we've done a model of the building where you look at it from the street, you can see, and actually, we set the, the aisle level at 10 feet, and you can see the ridge, you see the ridge of the, of the, of the salt shed. So, you, the public shouldn't see the salt shed, so I don't anticipate a problem.
It's pretty far back on the site, so.
Okay. And so, where you have the line with those small circles, that, is that a fence, then?
Uh, yes, that is, that is, no, the one with the X's.
The line with the X's.
The small circles of the lighting.
Yeah.
Oh, that's lighting. Okay, great, thank you. And, all right. And in this area, just at the south end here, where it, it looks like the topographical line, it gets pretty steep there?
It does. We have a retaining wall there.
It's a retaining wall there?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. But it was able to significantly be reduced with the changes that we've made.
Mm-hmm. Great, yeah. Because people had asked about that. They said, oh, this is really steep.
Yeah.
But a drop-off, and, and how are they going to address that, so, thank you.
It is. It's also advantageous, too, because, you know, people, people to the south, southeast, don't have a good view of the site, so helps shield the site, too. It's, it's nice.
From the south?
Yeah.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Yes, Richard.
I had one question, it's kind of off on the side. We understand with all the tax law changes, there's a lot of bonuses going to industries. Have you heard of any pronounced activity in construction that might take this and get way over the top on us because of competitiveness in the state? Is there anybody stepping up the plate, getting ready to expand, that you're hearing? I know you guys just do DPW, but I mean, are you hearing it for your engineering people?
I have not heard of that, but I'll, I'll ask around.
Okay. Because you can hear a big sucking sound real quick if people start building fast, couldn't they?
Hmm, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Construction comes a passenger lower.
Yeah. Especially if they had shovel-ready stuff, and they could put it out now. Of course, maybe not over here, maybe we're insulated enough, but what do you think? Do you think we're going to have a local contractor? Will it be local, or will it be a Boston firm?
We have a couple people, we have, we have Wes, who's doing two projects for us, for us right now. They're interested in it, and they're out of it.
In this area, you'll get out of Connecticut, too.
You get funding, I'm sure.
We've had a couple local contractors on the pre-qual. So, this project, because it's over a certain dollar value, gets, the, the contractors are pre-qualified, and we're in that process right now. And the GCs, yeah, there are a couple local, local contractors.
They're big enough to take it on.
Yeah.
One of the things that they, I want to give Weston Sampson credit for is, you know, when we hired them many moons ago, one of the reasons why we did is because the level of experience they have, and I think we've, you know, Richard, you've been involved more deeply than some of the board members, but we've benefited directly from their experience, from their design expertise and changes, and, you know, another town did it handle it this way, here's another town did this, here was their regrets, here was what they liked. One of the things they've been doing is, because they do so many of these, is they've been cultivating relationships with contractors and subcontractors and kind of making sure that those guys are aware that, oh, by the way, we, we got a couple other projects that are about to be ready for you, and kind of, you know, teeing people up to get ready to bid for the work. And, I mean, it helps them, because then these guys are, there's, there's more competition, but then they also, you know, they also are kind of waiting for our bids versus, you know, them chasing our bid versus our bids chasing them, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. I was also wondering, too, even with the casino finishing, I noticed there's a gigantic new hotel going up on River Road over there. How much more construction is, because we're not involved in the industry, you guys are, we're not, we're not seeing it.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of construction going on, and, and it's, it's a huge part of getting competitive bids, is making sure you, you put it out at the right time. And the right time is, 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 you know, sort of, I don't want to say a crapshoot, because it's really not. I mean, spring's typically a, a good time.
I can see a lot of people bidding right now, too, though, because.
Yep. Well, yeah.
Same mentality.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, they're, they're, you've got to think, they're thinking of this project already, because they've submitted their pre-quals.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that they'll necessarily submit, but the, you know, the hope is, because they're already engaged in it, that it will encourage them to submit.
How many pre-quals you got?
Um, I think it was 13 general contractors.
Okay, so you had, is that, I would consider that very good entry.
Yeah, I mean, you'd always welcome more, but 13 is, is, is good.
Yeah.
13 is good. Yeah. And the amount of, the filed sub-bids, I couldn't even, I couldn't even comment on, but it ranges, you know, and you have, geez, how many sub-bids do we have? I don't even know.
We had multiple sub-bids, and, and we had two filed, and I reported this last time, we had two disciplines, acoustic tile and painting or something like that, where we got none. But on the other ones, we got a handful in each sub, sub- trad.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like I said, which we took to be a good sign.
Well, it could also be a good move, that we got a lot of stuff going on over there, too. There's a lot more people mobilized in this area.
Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right.
And they could expand pretty quick. They may have a lot of infrastructure already here to take on jobs like this.
Yeah.
So, it could go to our benefits.
Now, this, in, in, in terms of mobilization for these people, I mean, the same contractor that's, that's doing those two projects, one's in Andover, Massachusetts, the other one's in the Cape.
Yeah.
So, that's a pretty big range right there.
Yeah, it is.
Go all around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a small project.
No. Yeah. Especially for our town.
All right, well, if, if that's, we appreciate you coming in, giving us a look at how things are going and some of the changes. I don't know if there's any other questions?
I said one quick one for Stephen. Stephen, is there any, have you looked at any alternative funding sources for any of these bid alternatives?
I'm working with the Green Communities office right now. We have some grant amendment stuff we have to do to sort that out before we can apply for the next round, but no, I have not.
Any, have any avenues whatsoever possibly through CPA?
I would doubt this would apply, or we'd be eligible.
Put lipstick on it?
It's not. And I, as you see in the town management report, we're, we gave out, you know, we're like a, you know, the counter at Macy's, we're giving out lots of lipstick on projects.
But, but I would assume that you're, we're still pursuing for the energy portion of it, the energy rebate.
Correct. There are multiple sources of funding for that. To be honest with you, and I, I've been swapping emails, you have to spend down your entire first round of grant money before you can apply for a second, and the amount of money we spent is less than we received because of the change from the streetlights. And so, it reduces the amount we would need to fund the actual improvements, and, you know, it's well within the range of awards they give, but they have this rule that you can't get more until you spend. So, I'm trying to get them to basically say, make us blow the last, you know, $50,000 or whatever we have, let's, let's, let's use that money on these $200,000, $300,000 worth of, of improvement, or the $150,000 to $200,000 versus kind of doing it. And so, I'm having that dialogue with them right now, and so, there's some administrative work we need to do to get that down. But there are other, if, if Green Communities says no, there are other sources.
But I imagine you're actively pursuing.
All right.
Great job.
So, well, thank you for the presentation, and we'll move on to our next part of our agenda.
Thank you for having us.
Yeah. We'll probably see you this weekend at the conference.
Yeah, you guys going to be up in Boston?
Yeah.
Jeff said he was going to be up there prior.
Jeff will be there. I will, I will not be there. Somebody's got to get the work done.
Well, that's true, but somebody's got to play, too.
We're just trying to line up the after-parties already.
Yeah, yeah, see Jeff.
Yeah, see Jeff.
All right. So, well, the next thing would be if, I don't know if there's any select board comments, but.
One real quick one, Tom, I'll make, we alluded to it sometime tonight, we had Senator and a rep in here. Congressman O'Neil is going to have a, a meeting with, at least our town, and I sent an email to him reminding him that East Long Meadow is equally involved, and they've come back since that time, said they're going to expand the list of people getting together and talking about this crumbling foundation issue. That he's taken a very active role, because he's been active in the state of Connecticut with their representatives.
That's the 25th.
That's the 25th, that held downtown, and she's getting ready to firm that up, so it may be a pretty good, and they're also bringing in IRS people to start talking about the impact, so. It was pretty well alluded to tonight, we're just in, we're just in their infancy, it's going to be a big program, and it's going to take a lot of, a lot of legwork to get it up to where there's money being put into it to fund.
All right.
But it's still going, just let people know, and there is activity. I was very, very, very surprised and, and very happy to hear how much Senator Lesser had been involved with this, and we hadn't known about it. And he's been very active in meetings with a lot of people, so he's, apparently, they're taking it very seriously from his office at this point, doing the background research. So, it's just a matter now of getting the data up to help them get sponsored legislation and push it through.
Okay, great. Any other comments?
I would just say, I think the timing on when they're going to start bidding this is, could be very good.
Yeah.
If you think this casino's running down, and Westfield's about to build another industrial park, but they're probably a year, year and a half away from doing it, so it's like right, right in between here.
So, people are going to have equipment in the area, I would say.
Yeah, mobilization could be major. We could have firms over here that are mobilized on some of the other jobs. Well, you see that, Bill, because you're more on the commercial side.
Well, and there are parts of this that are really specialized to DPWs, too.
Yeah.
You know, if you're a big-time, you know, drywall contractor, this job isn't a good deal for you, but if you're a, you know, you know, metal frames or, you know, panels and things like that, especially concrete, or, you know, industrial, you know, three-phase commercial electric, this is a good job, but if you're, you know, so each job is different. And there are, there are teams that get together and work on specifically on DPW, so I, like I said, I, I, the market is certainly volatile and is shifting. I think that they've been clear about that in their presentations, but I think we're going to hit a spot that's as good as we can get it at this time, and that's all we can hope for.
All you can do.
Okay. I just have one comment. You know, yesterday was Martin Luther King Day, and, you know, I don't know how many folks were able to watch any of the television specials that they had regarding the struggle of African-Americans, and there was one retrospective by James Baldwin, where he talked a lot about, you know, what his experiences were in being an observer and a witness of, you know, Martin Luther King and Malcolm X, and, and it was just, it was a pretty amazing show. And, and, you know, in a town like Long Meadow, we can be pretty isolated from the struggles of our African-American brothers, and so, it was really, you know, at least that one day a year, we have the opportunity to expand our thinking about the struggles that this country has faced and, and the struggles ahead of us, because it is, definitely is not over. And, you know, we've seen a lot in this last year, and I would imagine the next few years are, we're going to see quite a bit more about the kinds of struggles that we don't see in our town, but, but are definitely part of our, our country, and so, it's great that we have those opportunities to keep our, keep learning. All right. Our next thing would be our town manager report. Stephen?
Again, I would, I would defer, at this point, to allow Andy Carr, our town engineer, and Steve Sivary to come up and do the presentation.
Okay.
I don't know, keep that on.
We'll defer that again.
On the Dwight Road design process.
Dwight Road design reconstruction.
Steve, are you going to project?
Tom, will we get back to town manager report, just because I had some comments?
I wasn't able to figure out.
Part after this?
Just get back to town manager report, I had some comments or questions for Stephen?
Oh, we will get back to it.
Okay.
After this presentation?
Okay.
Yep, no problem.
Good evening.
Yes. Thanks for your waiting patience.
A lot of interesting discussions here tonight. This project has not changed substantively since the last time you have seen it, which was probably a little less than a year ago. We are currently at the final design stage, so the goal is to have it out to bid sometime, I would say in March, and to be started construction in the spring. One of the major goals is to get the signals up and running, the new signals up and running at the Converse Street-Dwight Road intersection in time for the, the medical campus buildings to be occupied, which will be before the end of the year. So, we're, that's kind of a tight schedule, but we're working towards that goal.
Mm-hmm.
So, we'll have final designs out relatively soon, and they will be reviewed by DPW, and then we'll go through the process of putting together the contract and advertising it for bids. Preliminary plans were submitted to DPW in November, and they were reviewed. Comments at that stage were relatively minor, so there's been a few revisions to the plans in response to that, and we're now, as I said, in the final design stage. We've also had coordination meetings and discussions with utilities. Eversource and Verizon have significant infrastructure in this corridor that is going to be impacted by the project, and, and they're working on their redesigns and relocations in order for them to get, move their, move their things out of, out of, out of the way in time for us to get the construction finished.
All right.
We really, the, the, the design is, is essentially the same as what you've seen. It's a five-lane section between of Dwight Road, between Converse Street and Williams Street, with sidewalks and bicycle lanes on both sides of the road, new signalized intersection at Converse Street, enlarged intersection at, at Williams and Maple for more, more efficiency managing the congestion there. And then, we're also, which isn't really reflected on the rendering, but we're also installing a new traffic signal at the Benton Drive and Chestnut intersection in East Long Meadow, as they're, you know, been kind of cooperatively working with us on, on this project. Maple Street will be widened, and the side, and the new sidewalk on Maple Street will go all the way across the site frontage to the east, to the, the existing nursing home driveway.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and the, so now, the, at the end of Converse Street, they've just opened up that road, did it just happen a couple days ago, or last week, or?
Oh, the driveway into the site, yes.
Yeah, right, into the site. And so, is that going to create any traffic, traffic challenges with having that there? But they're usually just, they're still in a construction phase, so.
It's a very location.
It's, it's still being used as, as the main access to the nursing home.
Oh, okay, for the nursing.
And will be, you know, until the new, new facility is, is constructed.
Okay.
The intersection has been reconfigured a little in order to accommodate that as, as more of a four-way intersection to, we actually cut into the, the existing island so that vehicles coming out of, out of the driveway can now go straight across if they're going down Converse Street without, and having to, you know, make the, kind of the S-turn to get around the island.
Is there been any change to the stop signs, just like on, when people are coming off Dwight Road, will there be any additional stops or coming off there? Do you have any, any stop signs, have you?
We, we haven't added any stop signs. The one, the one kind of additional traffic control measure we've implemented is, there is now a sign facing Dwight Road coming down from the north. As you approach the intersection, the, Berkshire Health, the nursing home was, was concerned that these vehicles that are now making this kind of right turn on the slip lane, and it's really a yield condition, but would be in conflict with the vehicles coming out of the driveway. And so, we, we did erect a sign here that, I think it says, watch, watch for cross-traffic.
Okay.
Just to make the drivers aware that there's something new happening here, that vehicles could be, could be coming straight across. vehicles could be, could be coming straight across. As far as I know, there haven't been any issues in terms of actual conflicts there.
Is there, is there two things? Are there any plans for interim traffic controls? You talked about, you know, we're hoping to get traffic signals up at Converse, at Converse and Dwight, you know, by the fall. But, you know, I don't know if it's our traffic committee or something like that, we may need four-way, I guess, stop signs, or where, I don't even know what it is. But some interim traffic control there, is there any thought to doing that? Or is there, it's something we may take, you know, we're open to looking at down the road, or as this progresses? Or we're just gonna leave it as it is until we're done?
Well, there isn't gonna be really significant change in the amount of demand on the site driveway until the actual new, new buildings are occupied and opened. So, so the idea is for that signal to be, to be in place kind of at the same time that that happens. So there isn't gonna be a condition where we have all those buildings occupied with no, with no signal.
Okay. I, I go back to when we had a, when we were trying to put an, a, a traffic signal at the intersection of Dickinson and Converse Street, and we're told that because there was a private entrance across from Dickinson, it couldn't be done by the state. So how did you pull that off here with that entrance to the nursing home is a private entrance? Is that a public road now?
We don't, the state's not involved.
The state's not paying for it.
That's one of the benefits of doing it by the diff. But to, to Steve's point, and I want to be clear, the new driveway is just a new pathway for existing traffic, baseline traffic. So the people that were coming out of the nursing home went left or right before. And sometimes had, and the ones who were gonna go down Converse Street had to make kind of a tough little jog to get, to make that movement. In many ways, that, that traffic flow and that movement is simplified. The people going left and right, the people going right don't have it too bad. The people going left, you know, east, or south, or south, rather, still have to dive out there and make it happen like they did before. Now people going Converse Street don't have to make that quick two-turn movement to get there.
Cut across two lanes of traffic.
Right, so, right. But they always had to.
Right.
And so there's no additional cars associated with the driveway. It's just the access point for the traffic that all existed that had, went in and out of that driveway before. And that's, like I said, that's one of the things that I think is great about this, the timeline here, why they're here tonight, is to say, we've got the developer's agreement approved. We're now finalizing designs. We're gonna be out to bid. And like you said, we're gonna keep it, we're gonna beat, I think, the occupancy of the building, which is really the ideal goal. The ultimate goal is to make sure we're online with the, with the traffic improvements before the building comes online and the traffic hits.
What's the rebid budget for this project? What's our, what's our estimated expenditure?
The construction cost that was included in, in the diff estimate for the development of the financing was two and a half million. And it looks like we're gonna be right at that number.
Now, the utilities, the utility work, does that include the utility work?
It does not include any reimbursement of the utilities.
Right. But, but they may, are they gonna, since it's in the right-of-way, they usually pay for the, their own utility work?
They do. On DOT projects, they, they now get reimbursed. But they, they haven't come back to us and told us that there's gonna be any costs of the town associated with that. We did, one of the things that we changed in the design was there's some direct burial primary service cables out there under the ground in the areas where we're planning to build sidewalks. They were very sensitive to that. They didn't, relocation of those underground cables would have been a very expensive and time-consuming effort. And so we, we moved the sidewalk off of that area so that they can just leave those cables alone. They still have to relocate the poles, but that doesn't seem to be as big an issue with them as the underground stuff.
And I, I remember during the October 2011 storm, there's a major feeder comes down Dwight Road, comes down, because it was out. And I remember when they had to go, go and replace that. So that must be why they're sensitive to it. It's, it's one of the major feeders that feeds the south end of Long.
There's a big substation right there at the end of that line.
Right.
And they had to relocate, and they were gonna put them on poles. And we know how we feel about putting wires up on poles. We're trying to get them off of poles. So we decided to agree. We didn't have to, we, we could have just said, move, move the lines, but that would have added a great expense and time to the project. So we found, I think, a reasonable accommodation for both utility and for the project, yeah.
Coming west or something like that?
Well, you know, before, when we were in preliminary design stage, we really didn't have a, have this, the right-of-way line accurately defined. So we didn't really know how much room we had. And now that we do, we know that we can, we can move the sidewalk back. It also has the advantage of leaving a snowshoe between the sidewalk and the road. So, so we were able to move the sidewalk back, and that's exactly where the cables are, is in that snowshoe.
Yeah. And if something happened and they had to, I mean, dig up sidewalk to repair the, I mean, sidewalk is the least expensive element of most, or one of the least expensive elements. And so if they had to tear up the sidewalk to get at their lines to do a, a major project, no big deal. It's a lot different than cutting the road and doing all that.
So, if there are any other questions?
I don't know if we went into the detail. Do you, I don't know if you're off the top of your head, level of service for the intersections before and after?
I have, I have that here. I just need to find it. I know we have level service F at, at Dwight and Williams currently, and that's, you know, just gonna get worse over time.
Sorry to put you on the spot, Steve.
That's okay. No, it's good. I'm, I'm, it's like I'm sitting right at my desk at work, right here.
So the other thing, while he's looking that up?
Oh, go ahead.
Steve is also, or Fosn O'Neill is also the designer for the Long Meadow Street project for the casino-related project as well. So there's gonna be some integration there. And this isn't for Long Meadow, but the, the X redesign that Springfield is doing is also Stephen Fosn O'Neill.
Yes.
If, if he can fix that, he can fix anything.
The status of the Converse and, and Long Meadow Street project is that all the traffic data has been collected. The survey is, I expect to have in my hands the base mapping this week. And so we'll be able to, we're actually having a kickoff meeting with DPW on Thursday, and that we're gonna be proceeding with that design. That, that is a DOT project, so it'll have a somewhat longer timeline.
Well, is it fair to say that the level of, the ser, level of service improves throughout the corridor?
Well, it would be kind of a waste if it didn't. But, um, yes, it's definitely gonna be improved. I mean, that's, you know, we wouldn't go to all the length of, of, you know, adding two lanes to Dwight Road. That's really what we were trying to achieve there is getting a really good level of service, really, really efficient operation for the intersections.
I don't know if you guys have heard this, but there, East Long Meadow is looking towards the old packaging plant. They're looking at a huge mixed-juice redevelopment there that is starting to get some legs. And as, you know, as you guys know, it's, we get nothing. We don't get mitigation from other municipalities when projects like that happen. And I think it, you know, thank goodness we're doing this now, because as he said, absent this project, the, the level of service in intersections through, through that corridor would get even worse with that development. And we didn't know that when we were planning all of this, but.
We're waiting for the.
I don't know if everybody cares about the details. All right.
All right. So, well, when you, you can always email them to Stephen, and he can share.
I do have the traffic study. I just don't have it at my fingertips like he did.
The study is, is all part of the record now, but.
Yeah.
All right.
In fact, I think I sent to the board a supplement that I submitted to the Mass Works program, right? Did I send it to you guys?
There you go.
In a separate email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
My God, I thought I forgot. Any questions for Andy or Steve?
No, it looks like we're done. Okay.
Thanks, guys. I do, I do have the results. So obviously, the Dwight and Maple is the, is the significant bottleneck. Level of service now will be worse level of service in the future. We're improving it to level of service C from F. So going from a seriously over-congested condition to a relatively free-flowing condition.
Eighty seconds.
So the overall, the average delay per vehicle without improvements is eighty-eight seconds per vehicle, and we're improving that to twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Yeah.
That's much easier to understand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If fifty cars queue up back down Williams Street like they do at five o'clock.
Yeah.
You can multiply fifty by sixty seconds. That's, you know, you can do the math.
Yeah.
It's a big difference in, in getting to that intersection time-wise.
Yeah. Depends what the average vehicle experiences.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, great.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming in, keeping us apprised. And, well, we may as well finish the old business. We just have three approval of minutes. We can finish that section.
I move, we approve the minutes of December eighteenth, regular meeting?
Second, okay. All those in favor? Okay.
I wasn't here for the others.
Second, yeah. Someone wanna move on the?
Someone.
January second?
Someone.
Approved, okay. And second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
No, you abstained.
And the January fifth special meeting, some move to accept the minutes on that?
Yes, I'll move.
Okay, second then?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Again, I wasn't there.
And you would have said, yeah. Okay. So now it looks like we can go to the Town Manager Reports.
Okay, thanks, Tom. One of the biggest things that, one of the reasons why Town Manager Report is not as robust as it could be is that substantial amount of time was taken up over the last couple of weeks dealing with building issues related to the weather. And I have a brief, a paragraph under my report, and then I attached a memo that we, and that was similar to information we presented to the, or this is the information we presented to the school committee, because they wanna know, I mean, it's, the town owns the buildings, but when they lose a day or two of school, it's the school committee's, that's their purview that, that is impacted.
Yeah.
I don't wanna rehash it all, but suffice it to say that we did a lot of, we spent a lot of time planning and working together with the schools collaboratively in a way that I thought was really a new high-water mark in that regard. And we still nevertheless were impacted by the conditions. And, you know, we, we regret that there was loss of days of school, but I am proud of the fact that we would have lost, we would have lost many more had we not done the level of preparation and planning, and we're not as responsive as we were. And I certainly can answer as many questions as I, as I can on that. On the positive side, the Long Meadow Police Department did achieve certification, which is a step towards accreditation. Accreditation is something we talked about quite a bit over, we haven't talked about it in a while because they've been in the process.
Yeah.
About a year or so ago, we talked about it extensively. And it is, we're the first department in Hampton County to be certified. And we are, we are moving forward towards accreditation, but this is a really significant milestone. And, and I'm just gonna read this paragraph, because I think that the people at home need to have a sense of, of the level of work that the department had to do in addition to doing all of its regular work of keeping the community safe. Certification program consists of one hundred and fifty-nine standards, all of which are mandatory. Since these one hundred and fifty-nine stand, and standards could be what type of uniform, how you wear your equipment, how you should make, what types of vehicle, you know, how you maintain your vehicles, how you, how you're supposed to write a traffic ticket, how you're supposed to write our incident report, everything. Since a hundred, since these one hundred and fifty-nine standards are a part of the two hundred and fifty-seven mandatory standards for accreditation, certification is a significant milestone towards accreditation. As a result, the Long Meadow Police Department completely reworked their policies and implemented a new policy manual that's titled the Administration and Operation Manual, which consists of eighty-five new policies that were drafted utilizing current and proven practices. And then they had a group of assessors come in and really go through the department with a fine-tooth comb to analyze all of this for a couple of days back in September. And they, and they met the, they met the bar on all of their policies. Before they started this process, the Police Department Policies Procedures Manual was that thick. They added eighty-five new policies and rewrote all of the rest of them. So it just was, and I wanna give Chief Stankowitz and Lieutenant Stocks really central credit for this, because Lieutenant Stocks was the accreditation manager. But this was a, a thing that the chief, who's been with the department a very long time and knows what a great department it is, really wanted to push to make it even better. And so I wanna give those guys credit. It, it's a great accomplishment, but, but the result of a lot of work and teamwork. So I really am proud of them for what they were able to accomplish. So I think we had talked last year about the Wolf Swamp Master Plan concept. Some residents had gotten a CPA grant to do some irrigation and install an irrigation well. And I had suggested to the CPA at the time that if we're really gonna, if we're gonna do this, let's, let's master plan the entire field and see, you know, what is the future of Wolf Swamp Field? How, should it be laid out differently? Let's, you know, priority one is let's deal with the traffic and pedestrian safety issues that are along Wolf Swamp Road that are, that are bad, especially when we have jamborees and, and sort of large-scale events there.
Sure.
So we started that effort. We did end up spending a little bit of money to hire a designer who specializes in field space, in field layouts. And he said that we have not met to review them internally. Like, so Barry Jarvis and the Ground, the DPW Grounds Division and the people who are really the primary stakeholders for the, you know, for the, for the custody and programming of these fields. We haven't dissected them internally. I mean, obviously, you can see that there's some changes to how fields are aligned, changes to how the parking is developed. We did apply for another CPA grant for a ring road, which is in one of the concepts, to address those parking issues. There's also some concepts in here for interior parking. There's gonna be different costs and benefits associated with each of these that we're gonna determine. But I just wanted to give the board a heads-up that we are working on that in advance of, you know, going out to do the well project. And the same group of residents has also applied for another grant to do the irrigation system installation, which is a good idea. We're just, we just weren't there yet. But I, you know, I think that the biggest thing is, we did a survey, Barry Jarvis and Parks and Rec Department did a survey about what do people want for field space. Got a lot of great feedback. Obviously, baseball and softball are sports that aren't as popular as they were, and the greatest demand is really for flex fields. So you can have soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, things like that. Those are just in higher demand than baseball. It's no knock on the sport. It's just, it's the way the numbers are trending.
Yeah.
And then, again, the biggest thing was, and Andy Carr was a part of this, how do we, actually, the ring road was his idea, how do we, you know, get people parked closer to the fields and off of Wolf Swamp Road in a way that is safe? And as you can see from some of the concepts that, you know, that not only, it not only gets people closer to the fields where they're going, but it also takes the parking area on the East Long Meadow side of the fields that is really underutilized, because it's just a gravel, gravel lot, it's not striped. And there's times where people are parking in front yards on Wolf Swamp Road, and that parking lot is half-empty, because it's, they can't see it, it seems far away, and it's, it's just not user-friendly. You could convert that to field space. So you could even gain a little bit of field space by doing this. So I'm excited about the, the options. You know, obviously, we don't know how much it's gonna cost, but I do view this as a multi-year effort. And, and the CPA seems to be committed to supporting the effort through some of their funds that are recreationally dedicated. So.
Yes, Mark.
Steve, what's the, what's the process by which the, these, I think there were four or five options get, get reviewed? Is it the Parks and Rec Committee that is gonna review them and, and discuss them? And, you know, because they're very different from, some of them are very different from one another. So I was just wondering if, if we'd established the process yet.
So Barry has been really kind of the, the front person for the Parks and Rec Board, obviously. She works with them, she interacts with them daily. But like I said, the survey was really the big, the first snapshot into what we need. So she built, her feedback on the, like, what fields we need and what fields we don't need is based on the survey, but also direct feedback from the Parks and Rec Board. And we're certainly gonna show this to them. We are gonna present this information to the CPA as well, to show them where the master plan kind of stands. And I say master plan, it really is the survey, parking lot, and field layout, you know, and, and I actually owe them a document. But the document is essentially the paragraph I just gave you. I don't wanna make it seem like there's this master, like the town has a master plan that's a big document. This is a relatively simple thing. We just called it a master plan to, to, to show that we were looking at the whole, looking We just called it a master plan to, to show that we were looking at the whole, looking at it holistically. You know, I think it's going to, once we've kind of made a recommendation internally based on cost and, you know, programmability and layout and things like that, then I think we'll take our recommendation back out and show the Parks Board, bring it back here. You know, and they present, I mean, the people are going to get it first only because of timing of the CPA. Because they, we applied for the funding for the ring road because we want to get going. They want to see the master plan. But it's based on, you know, the, the knowledge we have about who's using the fields and who's not getting to use them.
Just a comment about the ring road. I think the, the town or the Parks and Rec Department has some experience based on a ring road at Turner Park.
Correct.
That I think we want to not do this, make the same mistakes there that we made at Turner Park Ring Road. And there were mistakes made.
Yeah.
Initially. And I'll, I'll leave it at that because I don't want to get into a discussion about the benefits or downsides of a ring road. But I think we've, we've got something to look at and I suspect the Park Committee can give as much input as anybody on that.
So the one thing that the feedback we got on the, on the road was that, you know, on paper, it looks like a long road, but I've taken calling it the three-minute road. Because Mario Mazza and I got in his vehicle and we drove all the way around. And we went fifteen miles an hour, ten to fifteen miles an hour, we were crawling along. And it was three minutes to get around the entirety of the field. The biggest thing with parking, and this goes to Turner Park, this goes to the current parking arrangement, is definition. Parking only works well when it's defined. And that means you really, the ultimate way of doing that is paving and striping. That is obviously extremely expensive to, to install and maintain. So you really want to have more than is required if you're going to keep it kind of natural area and just let, let people park on the grass kind of nose in all the way around. So then you have, you know, hundreds of parking spaces and you're not worried about striping and everything else. And they're not, you know, giving up a lot of field space to get that outcome. So, but these are all things we have to chew on. I just want to let you guys know that we are making some progress on it. It really isn't this giant undertaking. It's really just going to be a series of concepts based on, really largely on safety, number one, and then cost. And then, and then, then obviously the, so really, safety is the first goal. I think maximizing field space is the second goal and cost is the third goal. Because we do have the opportunity to keep working with the CPA year over year to implement this, this plan. And I don't think it's, it's not millions. It's maybe a couple hundred thousand to really get this done.
So the plan right now is none of the, say the perimeter parking would be even gravelled, it's just grass?
We haven't really sorted out that level of detail.
I think that, I like that.
Yeah. That was actually the designer said, well, can't they just park on the grass? And it's, I mean, the grass has been there for a very long time. It's not, it's compacted.
It's not going to be grass for very long. If it is even grass now.
Right. But I think when you look at the fact that half of the fields or two, a quarter of the fields were used, I wasn't here, but I remember seeing pictures of it, the staging for the trees in two thousand and seven?
Oh.
Or two thousand and eleven?
Right.
You know, it was.
Destroyed, we destroyed the whole east end of that.
Well, you destroyed, the grass was destroyed, but, you know, the level of compaction on the fields is, you know, it's not like they're new fields where the people are going to sink into the, it's not like that. It's pretty tough.
I know, I went to a training at Wellesley College and I couldn't believe how much parking they had on the grass. And it was really nice, you know, instead of having paved parking lots all over.
Except it'll get muddy at some point.
Yeah, well, there's, there's ways to resolve that. It costs money, but there's ways to resolve it.
Yeah. And we could see how go, you know, if, you know.
It's better to start with a lower cost investment than to go to the high end.
Yeah.
And then have to say, oh gee, we overdid it. So, that's good.
If I can, so.
Yeah, 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 I've seen that. Now, is there any chance that the same group would want to do a well and irrigation system for the town green? Because they certainly need some water there in some places.
No comment.
No comment, okay.
No, I, I think it's, you know, the people that are interested in doing this, their kids play there now. That's why they're really interested in doing this. And that's, you know, I, I support the idea and I, and I, you know, it is a citizen's petition. It's not coming from us. We were, we're trying to build this in over time. Siting of the well was a big deal for us because you, I don't know how big a wellhouse is or what's, you know, infrastructure is needed, but you want to site the wellhouse first before you lay out the fields. And we are, that's a spring project that we're going to work on because it was approved at town meeting. But, you know, the urgency to this is driven by people's self-interest, like most things at town meeting. But nevertheless, it's still, it's something that I think long, should be done. And the whole reason for this is when we went through the DPW sighting process and discovered that these were in fact Article ninety-seven fields, and it's like, well, might as well just get on with making them the best fields they can be versus not making a significant investment because they could have some other use. And now we know that's really not likely, let's make some investment. So that's, you know, and like I said, I don't think we're, you know, the irrigation systems are going to be two, three hundred thousand dollars all in or more, probably include the well, probably close to three hundred thousand. But the, you know, the parking ring road, maybe that's a couple hundred thousand dollars. You know, we're still not, we're not talking two, three million to make this happen. And again, it's phased in over time.
Stephen, were you in town when the well failed and we had to bring in a new electrical wiring?
Where?
Obviously not. On Wolf Swamp Fields, obviously not.
There's not a well there, no.
There was some, there was a light there. There was something that failed and I remember we had to, was it there or was it Turner Field?
Turner.
It was Turner Field? Anyway, just keep in mind the cost of bringing in electrical wiring because it was ridiculously expensive.
There's electrical there because of the concession stand.
No, but it was on, it was on way off the road.
That's why we're setting the well next to the concession stand.
All I'm saying is.
So Facilities Director, I sent you an email about this earlier today. I, I think we've, we're re-advertising. We did, we did reclassify the position, which was really long overdue. And I'd been kind of ignoring what I knew was a persistent issue. And so we did do that. Like I said, I don't think there's a budgetary impact in real time. It's just really more attractive for someone to know that we can have a competitive market rate wage and then there's opportunity to earn more through step increases and things like that. You know, we had two, I thought, really strong finalists and they, they both said no to us. And we weren't able to really offer them very much because we, we got, we offered them top step and that was less than both of them were making currently. It's hard to attract people to a new job when you're making them take a pay cut. And that is an essential position. I mean, I just, I'm going to refer you back to the first paragraph and the memo following. And we, we were able to do all of this really without a Facilities Director, but when things like this come up, I mean, everyone really had to stop, ignore a bunch of their regular work to do all these things with the building issues. Facilities Director is a key position, extremely important and requires a diversity and a level of skill not required from most positions in the town. So that's why we decided to beef it up a little bit and hopefully we, I think today we got a dozen emails or, I mean, a bunch over the weekend. So there's some renewed interest in it. And then the regional dispatch, we're still working at it. We're going to, just a couple of steps, we're going to be looking, we, we did finalize an executive director job description and we are going to move forward. We're going to apply for a taxpayer identification number for the district. And we are also retaining a consultant who was formerly with the Correll Group to help us, you know, redo some of the budget and operating budget and like staffing and numbers now that we're a two-town rec.
Yes.
You go ahead, Stephen. I have a few questions about. My, my first one is just with the rec and, and as, since you ended with that, I'll start with that. At this point, I think the select board, and Tom, I'd like to recommend the select board review the whole concept of the rec. We started out with a very different concept from where we are now. It was a five suburban town. We're now the city of Chickapie and the town of Long Meadow. I understand the drive to do this, but it's very, very different from where we initially started when we went there. And I think it deserves a review.
I report on this every month, Mark.
I, I.
I report on this every month. So there's a real-time review of what we're doing. But if it's, we're going to pull out and not really look at the bigger picture.
Then, then Tom, what I'd like to do is ask that the, the select board either re- reconfirm their commitment to this or not because we need to vote. Yes, you're right. We have heard this all along. But at no point have, has the select board said, wait a second, it's not what we, what we bought in for. I'm not saying we need to pull out, but it's very, very different from what we bought in to originally, which was five, you know, Wilberham, Palmer, Ludlow, you know, East Long Meadow and Hampden and Long Meadow. And, and, you know, I'd love to know why the other towns pulled out. I certainly also want to know what the implications are in terms of service and cost to the town of Long Meadow. None of us went into it thinking we were going to reduce cost. Then along the way, we said it was going to be lower cost. Let's see what it is in Chickapie. All I'm saying is that, you know, when it's Long Meadow and the city of Chickapie, it's just different. That's
So.
That's, that's my point. And, and
I know, but.
I understand.
I know, but you're not really listening to me on this.
No, I'm, I'm listening very well.
So, because the story isn't changing. Now, the dynamics are changing to some extent. The, the, the players are changing. And, and why did those, why did Hampden and East Long Meadow get out? They thought they could do better together. I don't, that's their choice. But, and to, to get to your answer to your question, the reason why we're retaining the, the consultant formerly, the Correll Group is no longer part of the project. But the reason why I'm bringing him in is to run that analysis, Mark. So yes, I agree that we need to answer those questions. But I just don't want to, just because things are shifting, I don't want to be reactionary to, things are changing. We need to, you know, need to worry. The cost commitment from the state is still seventy-five percent of operating cost. The service levels are something that we are, we are, the most important thing is the level of service. Okay, even more than the money. The most important thing is the level of service. And we are actively engaged in trying to figure out what does the service level look like with a two-town rec? But this whole process has been, there really aren't a lot of examples out there. And so the whole thing is a learning process and an iterative process, whereas things shift, we have to know what that looks like for us. And you're right, we, I'm starting to have some doubts of my own, but I know we're not at the position where we know what we need to know to decide, is this truly right or wrong? And, but we're getting there.
I, I agree with that. All I'm saying, Stephen, is that, that, that things change. You know, when, when East Long Meadow, when Wilberham was the first town to pull out, we said, fine, let's stick with it. You know, but when Hampden pulled out, fine, let's stick with it. You know, East, East Long Meadow pulled out and I was starting to say, that Hampden pulled out, now it's, it's us. You know, we brought in Chickapie. I just don't want the pursuit to be more driving than the goal. That's all. And I just think it's worth looking at again.
Did East Long Meadow and Hampden, are they gotten together? Is that the deal?
They're, they're going to try that. I'll be honest with you, I mean, I don't want to pick on my friends in East Long Meadow, sorry.
Obviously be interested in what the consultant has to say.
Yeah.
And, and a new analysis, but my feeling is that this is like the wave of the future. You've got to, you know, regionalize a lot of this stuff. And I, I say we stick with it unless he comes up with something like, oh, it's going to be horribly expensive and it doesn't make any sense and whatever, you know. But I have a feeling that once this gets going, that you'll see people come back in.
Well, and, and that's, that's the hope though, but I think we've got to, we owe it to the town to look at it. You know, we went into it with one thing and it's not like it shifted a little bit. It's, you know, we went into five suburban towns and now we've got the city of Chickapie and Long Meadow. I mean, if you listen to the, the Springfield City Council campaign for the last election, it was all nine-one-one calls in Springfield are answered in Springfield. They made a big deal about that. Whether it's right or wrong, I have to believe that I don't care if they're answered in California as long as the people know where we are. They answer it and they dispatch it and they do well. What I don't want is somebody saying, you know, you got ninety-five and five and we're the five percent of the, of the calls and we're getting five percent of the responses. And, you know, I want to make sure we have some commitment.
I mean, that's not, that's not how it works.
But, but the thought process was, we were five semi-equals or calling, you know, some level of equal-sized communities and now we're not. We're a big city
Right.
and a small town. And I just think it's worth taking a look at it.
But Mark, I think.
And I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I just think we need to look at it.
But I think the analysis, what, but things are changing and it's frustrating for me because I've spent more time and energy on it probably than anyone. And I'm frustrated towns are kind of jumping in, jumping out. But the analysis, the players have less to do with it. Where that affects it is what are the costs to operate the district? And what is the revenue, what is the cost allocation formula going to be between Long Meadow and Chickapie? But the model for how this thing actually works, no matter what it costs and what the allocation formula is, Chickapie has, we share a space with the city of Chickapie, but we have our dispatchers answer our calls and dispatch our calls like they do today. And then Chickapie has its share of dispatchers. But there's one manager for the place, there's one IT director. They're all on their own health insurance, which would reduce our OPEB liability and all that other stuff. All that stuff is, is the, those fundamental building blocks of, this is why we talk about regionalization. All those fundamental building blocks of why regionalization is a good idea are all still here, even if it is just Long Meadow and Chickapie. And to be honest with you, the state wants this to work probably back because they want a regional success story. And that's why they didn't cut the amount of the grant when two towns dropped out. Why they are, I quite, I'm probably getting ahead of myself here, but why I think they're going to rewrite their grant requirements so they can commit to us more funding to make this work. And why they've committed to a reimbursement rate on operating costs, not reimbursement, but an operating cost share that is probably the highest that anybody's getting in the state.
Than a more detailed review than, than the, you know, ten minutes on every town manager's report. We'll, we'll support it and we'll go forward. But I think we need.
Yes. I, I agree we need the analysis. I just, but when I hear you calling for a vote, we're still a little ways away from when that's going to be the right time. Because I would tell you, when it looks bad for Long Meadow, I'm going to be the first person to come here and say, we really ought to get out of this thing. And I, and I will make the recommendation. I vote, you know, here's the process for getting out of this under the district agreement. I recommend the select board exercises that right because this isn't working. And you know I'm going to be the first person to say that because if it doesn't work, we're not doing it.
Fine. I just think that, you know, you're, as the chair of that group, you're invested to the point where you're going to be the last one out, is my concern.
It's a valid concern, but my obligations to the town of Long Meadow, not to Westcom.
Fine, thank you. I got a couple other quick questions about.
While we're still on this discussion though, I was, because when I first looked at this, I was saying, you know, there's two, two places, there's Chickapie and us involved. We've both run dispatch centers for a long time. I don't understand where a consultant has to come in. Why would we even need a consultant in this situation?
Because the Correll Group did, created some formulas and some spreadsheets based on assumptions for how these things are constructed. And that type of analysis was somewhat specialized. And I, I, we can't, I mean, they have to, I want them to use the same assumptions and formulas and everything else that we built this concept on to, to have accurately show where we stand compared to the information we had when we were a five-town rec.
But, but there's other.
Or four-time, sorry, four-time rec.
But there's other rec, you know, there's other centers, the other nine-one-one call centers in the state.
It's different. It's, everyone's different.
And we can't just take one of those.
We're not talking call volume, Tom.
And move it over here.
We're not, we're, we're talking organizational structure, that's all. We're not talking call volumes or how calls are dispatched. None of that stuff is, it's just, how much does a director cost? How many people do you need? How many dispatchers do you need for the call volume we're going to have? All those kind of metrics. And we can, we can answer most of it, but we want to make, to get apples to apples from four towns to two towns, I need the people who built that, those formulas.
It was a pretty complex analysis if you go back to the report. I, I don't know that we need a consultant either, but it was a complex analysis. And I suspect that it's more than we're, we've got the time to do.
Well, yeah, I mean, it is. And we don't really have anybody now who's providing kind of staff-level support for the effort.
Right. And this is a decision that's not made by us as a, as a select board.
It is.
It's, well, it sounds like.
It's made by the district.
What district is?
The board of directors.
Oh, to hire the consultant, right, right.
Consultant, yeah, yeah.
It's their money. It's their decision.
But the reason why it's a good decision is it's going to be, the consultant's work is going to inform us, geez, you know, our, our formula. Because the formula has to change. Because the formula is based on fifty percent population, fifty percent call volume. Well.
Okay.
And maybe it doesn't need to change, but it, it, you know, it does certainly merit some review. I'm not, let me be clear. I, I think where I'm frustrated is I report on this regularly. So the, the idea that the, the board's in the dark about what's happening, I get, I bristle about a little bit. But the, the fundamental principle of we need to look at this and make sure this still works for us a hundred percent. And these are the steps we're taking to make sure that we're still keeping our eye on the prize.
So, and Stephen, I, I don't want to give you the impression I'm saying, you know, I don't know what's going on. You're not reporting on it. My sense is I need a little bit more rope. I need a little bit more rope. You know, at some, what point we say, hey, we're running out of rope. I mean.
Yeah, we hung ourselves because we gave it to you.
Well, you know, we just need to.
Agreed. And, and we're not there, but. Agreed, and, and we're not there, but my hope is to get there soon.
Fine, okay. Tom, if I could, a couple other quick, I don't know if they're questions or, or comments, but, and they probably may have been better under select board comments, but your report kind of tweaked them to me. Driving around town after the storm, there seemed to be an awful lot of sidewalks and, and, uh, fire hydrant, not plowed issues, especially with the, with the unfortunate fire we had in town, showing how important it is to have fire hydrants. And I, I'm just wondering if we ought not ask the building department, who's already got too much to do, to take a more, what I'll call proactive approach to that by law enforcement instead of waiting for people to call and complain. We actually have maybe, say, forty-eight hours go around and say, look, we got a lot of violations. You know, especially, I'm not sure kids are walking to school on sidewalks, but the fire hydrants are something we ought not let, let pass. And I, it's, it's your call, he reports to you, but I'm just suggesting that that might be a better way to do it. Because right now, I know we, we respond to, to complaints or calls to the police department, but...
And actually, the police do that, I will tell you. We just had this, agreed. Uh, we just had this conversation internally, and I'm looking in the police department's report um, to see if they have any, um, tickets that they issued, um, or calls for service.
I don't know, probably happened in January.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so this is, yeah, this is the December report, so I don't have it in January, but...
Okay.
Um, but no, but, but it is the police department that does this, not Paul Lee. And they do, when they, if they see them, they'll do it, but usually it's enforcement by complaint, which is most of what we do in town. And they go out and they issue a warning, and then they'll go back twenty-four hours later, and they will issue citations. Uh, and they are, I'll say they're aggressive about it, but they are consistent with it. And there are, honestly, if you look at the number of citations, it's far fewer than the number of addresses.
Well, that's good.
Which is to say, which is to say that...
Yeah, they're giving them warnings and they're giving them a chance to do it.
It's the same people all the time.
Oh, okay.
It's the same people all the time.
I mean, so, my, two other comments. One is that I read through again about our assessor's office, and, you know, I know we're getting by with our consultant instead of what I think the formal title is, assistant assessor. But to, to me, you know, and, and it's a huge savings on our budget, but taxes are one of our major issues in town with people, and not having somebody for the town to walk into and talk to other than the clerk in the assessor's office. You know, I, I'd like to see us consider trying to find an assessor. I know you did, and we looked at it, it was difficult to find, but doing without an assistant assessor is...
I'm interested in that. Part, part of the second half of the contract we have with the consultant are actual office hours, um, starting the last week of January and running through the abatement season.
So we'll have somebody there.
There will be somebody there, and they, they can set up appointments for within that timeframe. It's minimum supposed to be four hours a week that that person is supposed to be in the office. And we did that purposely for that reason.
Okay, well, I'm sure that, I know that'll help, but, but four hours a week is kind of, I don't know what it takes. I don't know how many appointments people are going to make.
It's the schedule for that. If we need more, we'll have to adjust it.
Maybe what we need to do is, I don't want to say advertise, but let people know, you know, gee, we have appointment, you can meet with the assessor by appointment and let people know.
Well, again, if, if they have questions, it's the principal assessor and the assistant.
Right, okay, whatever.
If the assistant, you know, can't answer the question or so on and so forth, we're happy to make an appointment then with the outside consultant about why abatements or why, you know, the assessment is X, Y, and Z.
That's fine.
Is it fair to say that the board of assessors is satisfied with the current arrangements?
I would say so, yes.
Okay, that, that's fine. I, I was more interested in what you seem to be handling by having the office hours, I think that was...
Ninety, I would say, I, I don't know the actual number, but I'm going to guess the vast majority of walk-ins um, get handled easily by the assistant assessor and always have been.
Okay, well, that's fine, it's just that, there's an issue. The, the last thing I have here is, it was based on the fire department's comment about fire truck, the new fire trucks on, on its way. I will say that I was a little bit taken aback a couple of years ago when our new fire truck came in and some of the markings on it were what I'll call less than standard. And I, you know, I, for, for, this thing's costing us three-quarters of a million dollars. I'd like to make sure that we have some standard markings on this thing, and we don't go off and, and start doing hand-drawn beavers and other stuff like that. That's my personal opinion, but it represents the town, and I'm not sure the other represented the town.
I mean, I don't, and I forget what the answer was.
And I know you didn't do it, so...
Well, I forget the answers, but it's, it's on, it's been on all the trucks forever. That, that decal, I think, is something that the, I think it's the IAFL, I think it's the association or something.
I'm not sure.
But it's on, it was on the two we get rid of, and it's, you know, they, they put, it's, and, uh, every department does it. Every department has a little logo that they use. So it, it is a tradition thing, um, and it was on the other ones too, that's all I can tell you. And I, I don't love the, the, the picture, the logo, whatever it is. It's not what I would go with, but it is a, a, a fire department cultural thing.
All right.
And I did, and I, and to be honest with you, I did raise that issue with them.
Thank you.
Um, we'll see.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
Okay, you're welcome. And so, um, now if we could move on to new business, and we need to set the annual town meeting election dates. We need a motion for that?
I move that we set the annual town meeting election...
Town election.
Excuse me, the annual town election for Tuesday, June 12th, with a preliminary election date if needed, to be held on Tuesday, April 24th.
And we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All right. And we next need to look at the rates for the water and sewer.
Annually, I prepare for you, you folks, a spreadsheet, um, water rates, one for water rates, one for sewer rates. Then we'll further have to discuss the stormwater fee. But it's based upon, which I've also provided to you, the, the proposed budget that the DPW superintendent has put together. That proposed budget for the water department, as an example, is two million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand. It is slightly less than, than last year's budget. But putting those numbers together, also utilizing the same amount last year where we had put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars estimated to go into the reserves for capital needs and/or should we not meet the, the estimated revenue because of, of, of Mother Nature more than anything. And dividing it by an estimated amount of billable units, um, again, it's a mathematical calculation that we would have projected rates of three dollars and twenty-nine cents for FY19, is, is my proposal. The current rate at this point in time is three dollars and twenty-two cents. That, that rate was voted, um, on the last May of two thousand, two thousand and seventeen. And it was based upon the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission's coming with the last-minute capital plan that we had to adjust it from the original number that came in back in February. The main reason for the increase, even though I said that the budget went down, is that we are not using any reserves to fund this in FY19, where we used a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to offset those rates in FY18. So that's the main reason why the, the rate is still going up, but the budget is actually coming down. Everything else is relatively the same. The estimated revenue from non-rate areas, the interest revenue, I've upped a little bit to fifty-five hundred dollars as compared to four thousand. And the other ancillary types of, uh, work that the water department does for water connections, so on and so forth, I've upped that about five thousand dollars also. I don't know if I can, you know, I've, I've given to you the, the history of the budgets behind there. I've given to you the, uh, the information from, uh, the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission about the estimate, our estimated usage. And again, you have a copy also of the actual budget that was submitted by the DPW superintendent. Again, all reflective of that two-point-five million dollar request for FY19.
And the sewer rate will go down.
Look at the...
One at a time.
Oh, sorry.
Just focus on water, if you don't mind.
Why, why this year not use retained earnings? I guess there aren't any?
No, there are. Um, actually, in retained earnings for, uh, for the water, we currently have five hundred and five thousand dollars. That amount is, is right above...
It's about the minimum.
Right, our, our minimum according to policy is five hundred thousand dollars. But the main reason why we used last year the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars because it was such a large increase at the very last minute that we didn't want to ship it all over to the ratepayer. Um, and we divided it last year. We basically took a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we made it applicable to rates by adjusting the rates upward. And then we, um, we used this other hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from our reserves.
So, so Paul, if I could, one, so we have the proposal to add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the reserve. And then, right, isn't that what the one-fifty is?
Yeah, which is what we have done over the last couple of years.
Which never really has added...
Well, no, you know, that, that's, that's not true. It has added to the reserves. Those reserves a few years back were less than five hundred thousand dollars. We had a remarkable year, I believe, in, in last year. But the reality is, at town meeting, we actually used a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for, for certain needs in, uh, at the, at the November town meeting. We used, um, see, twenty-eight thousand dollars was used to the, for the DPW dump truck. We actually put in twenty thousand dollars to replenish the water reserves because, uh, we had water breaks at the beginning of the year, and their reserves were depleted, the, the reserves were depleted. And then we had to pay another hundred and eight thousand dollars to Springfield um, because we had used over our, our budgeted allotted, uh, amount in FY17. So, we used a hundred and fifty thousand dollars already this fiscal year out of our reserves. Otherwise, the reserves would have been, you know, you would have seen a growth in it.
Right, so I guess one of the things I'm thinking is that now that, because when I looked at this, I was looking at it over the weekend, now that we're at the five hundred thousand dollar level of our reserves, because we had been below it, you know, what if we cut that down by five cents? In other words, I'm, what I'm trying to do is get our water rate instead of being at three-twenty-two, going from three-twenty-two to three-forty-eight, going up some lesser amount. And, and my thought process was, instead of saying we need to put, because we don't need to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the reserves because we're at our reserve target, if we could, you know, reduce that by some amount and make the water rates a little bit less impactful.
Three-twenty-two, but the rate...
Well, I'm not sure you can do that, because if we put nothing in there, it goes from three-forty-eight, it goes down nineteen cents. Isn't that what I'm reading, Paul?
No, it's three-twenty-nine. No, it's three, it's going up seven cents.
It's going up seven cents.
Oh, from three, I'm sorry, right. So, right, so we could keep them at three-twenty-two.
If you wanted to keep it at three-twenty-two, you'd be cutting out about fifty-four thousand dollars out of it. So probably if you had that a hundred thousand dollars, you'd probably swing it.
I'd like to do that only because, you know, it, that number is, is the only thing we can play with in the spreadsheet you have. I mean, you know, it, it is what it is for everything else, although I am, you know, curious about, you know, city Springfield, but you've addressed all that kind of stuff. The budget's what the budget is, so, you know, do we not do capital projects? But that's the, so the only components to this that we can potentially use are either put more money into reserve, reserves, or let, or take less money out of reserves. The other thing, Paul, though, is obviously the denominator. And one of the things I was going to ask you is, is there any way we can go back over the last, just a couple of years and say, how much water did we actually sell? When we budgeted to sell seven hundred and eighty-eight, and my problem is, the, the monthly water department is in gallons, and this is in million cubic feet or vice versa.
I would have to get that history.
The question is, how close are we tracking? Even though I know that even when you give me the answer, it all depends on whether it's a dry year or a wet year next year anyway.
Right, you may recall that FY17, we had a huge amount of revenue come in because it was such a dry year. But, no, I can certainly get that information updated from the water and sewer department.
I think it'd be worth doing that, maybe putting that on this form, Paul, in, in the future. I'm not sure that's going to, like you said, necessarily influence what I'm, what we're going to do. But I think I'd love to maybe cut the use of, the, add to the reserves down to a hundred thousand dollars and keep the water rate the same.
Well, I guess another question would be, you know, we're looking at another, between, besides the Dwight project, Dwight Street project, we're also looking at Long Meadow Street coming online fairly soon in the next few years, right? And, and will there, once the casino is established and we get our, our funds. And are there, is that going to affect water mains, and is there going to be any additional costs to us?
I wouldn't see how...
On those projects.
I wouldn't see how that would affect it.
It wouldn't affect it. So there's nothing that is pending that we would say, we're going to need those reserves the next few years, because...
Nothing, so, I mean, the, the thing that you also have working for you, quite honestly, is that, I was just looking at, at, at the, at the debt service schedule, that the debt service schedule for both water and sewer drops off fairly substantially going into FY20. It drops off about a hundred thousand dollars, and then after that, it drops off another hundred thousand dollars. So any projects that you needed, you would probably just go through a bond issue, and you'd be able to pay them without really any effect on the rates over the next couple of years.
Certainly from sewer, I mean, we have sewer retained earnings, we could do some, for some small sewer projects. But, but at some point, that sewer interceptor is going to come along, Paul, and that's after twenty.
That is, uh, that year's, that is two years away, according to the...
Okay, so, it seemed to me that that's going to come into the sewer capital expenditures.
Right, that is scheduled on here for FY20, I think.
All right, well, can I, can I just forward a motion that we keep the rate at three-twenty-two, same as last year? Anyone want to second that?
I'll, I'll second that, but I'd, I'd like to say, because we need to, by adjusting the amount of money, put it to reserves.
I'll make it work out backwards.
No, yeah.
Reserves, okay. Yes, the discussion is, our manager must weigh in on it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's, it's fine. The only thing I would say is, just as the risk administrator, um, one of the reasons why we were able to insulate rate payers from the full force of the rate hike was because we had those retained earnings. And by cutting it in an amount that is really almost, you know, it's only a few dollars for the average household.
Yeah.
You cut the retained earnings, and therefore, if this happens again with the Springfield Water and Sewer Commission, and I, I mean, yeah, every year they say they have, they have their act together and everything's accurate, and then something happens. It's just, we don't now, we don't have that ability in the way that we did before. That's all, but I don't think, it doesn't make a lot of difference either way.
Stephen, the rate we're setting tonight is only, is only good until Springfield Water and Sewer Commission tells us that they've changed their mind in, in, you know, February or March, April, whatever, as they did last year.
But if they do that...
If that happens, we're going to be back here...
But you're passing through then a hundred, a hundred percent.
But we're going to have to do that anyway.
But we didn't have to do that.
Right, right, well...
Fifty-four thousand dollars is not enough to really razor or sting. I, I feel obligated to say...
No, I, I hear you.
Because you give that up to some, to some extent. That's what, I mean, it doesn't, Paul, you know, it doesn't make much of a difference.
No, I, I don't think it makes much of a difference, especially given the, uh, the, the debt service, that if anything major happens in the next couple of years, as far as that capital projects, we have capacity to fill it in now. If, if Springfield comes in with something skyrocket like it did last year, again, I think we are going to be here. But for, for, to, to keep it level, I mean, we, we, I think we should be okay.
Okay, so we'll call for a vote? All those in favor? Okay, so we'll keep the rate at three-twenty-two?
I seconded it. It's Tom's motion, I second it.
And then next we go to is the sewer.
Is the sewer, again, you have the same type of information. You have the proposed budget, uh, the estimated billable units, um, the history of the budgets, Springfield's estimate. That actually comes out, the, um, calculation actually comes out to be a, a penny less when you do the calculation. So we're currently at two dollars and fifty cents. The, the mathematical calculation comes down to two dollars and forty-nine cents. Here, I propose that you actually keep it at two dollars and fifty cents.
I'll move we set the sewer rates for fiscal, for fiscal year 2019 at two dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, and a second, what the, how much is the interceptor going to be? Do I dare ask? Don't ask?
Ten million?
Uh, it's five point two on there.
That's five point two, okay.
Okay.
But, but...
Any other discussion on this rate?
I just want to say, but, but our sewer retained earnings are nine hundred thousand dollars. And so it's likely that some of our sewer capital projects that are on the list, we could literally pay for out of the retained earnings. I mean, yeah, sewer lines break, but, you know, our, our, our policy is also five hundred thousand...
Five hundred thousand for there too.
For there, so we have enough money that we don't need to start bonding for maybe some smaller sewer projects, right, Paul?
I, I, you're right. You, you don't have to do the smaller sewer projects. There's one that is proposed on the cop... There's one that is proposed on the capital plan for two-hundred-and-two-thousand that'll come up, you know, so that can easily be taken out of there. Again, looking at the debt service, it drops off fairly substantially. It drops off over two-hundred-thousand dollars over the next two years. So that will have some impact to mitigate whatever rate increase is affected by that north, this is what, the north interceptor?
Yeah, I mean, I think the way I look at it is, hang onto it until we get into that project. That's the single biggest sewer thing we've done in many, many years and the single, and the single most important one, other than a river crossing to Bondi's Island. It's the single most important sewer project we have.
But I think being able to say that we're holding the line on water and sewer rates is pretty good, given what...
Right. I think you are doing that, right. And I think, I think, I agree with that. I just think on the retained earnings thing, I just, I would hang, because we're so close to this north interceptor project, you just never know what's going to happen.
I just think that, you know, a million bucks in there.
So we need to vote on this?
Correct.
So we're going to maintain the same rate? All those in favor? Okay. So we've held the line on two of these, that's great. And now the last thing, is any subcommittee reports?
No, there's stormwater.
Stormwater fee.
Oh, stormwater, yes, submissions, yes.
Now, that, no, there's really no historical data. It was all information from the consultant, where we've kind of identified last year when the consultant was here, we had a figure, it was also put into your, an executive summary that was on the select board's webpage. Basically, I remember during the conversation, we kind of had said that the very first year we'd raise about two-hundred-thousand dollars, that we can graduate this. That two-hundred-thousand dollars, Mario has presented a budget, actually, at this point in time, that he had certain line items that were being allocated over to the stormwater enterprise fund, certain percentages. His budget was actually two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand dollars. I think we can easily, you know, make the adjustment to get it back to two-hundred-thousand dollars. So it fit in very nicely from all the information that we had prepared about a year ago, that if we had a two-dollar-and-twenty-five cent per month fee for every equivalent residential unit, and every residential property is one equivalent residential unit, we would be able to raise about two-hundred-thousand dollars exactly. Most of the commercial buildings or the non-residential units have a sliding scale that is also outlined for you, is outlined in the, in the warrant article that was actually approved, the bylaw. But it's outlined, too, again, in an email to Stephen from Tracy Adamski, who is the consultant from Tie and Bond, who had actually had done this. So I'm very comfortable with, you know, making that same recommendation of keeping that two dollars and twenty-five cents as we had, basically, always talked about. I think it'll get us to where we wanted to go, what we had always said, you know, over the last, last year's budget cycle. And it will start the process of getting this stormwater fee up and running for foreseeable future.
Paul, I think it's important for people to understand that this is a, two-twenty-five per month means it's twenty-seven dollars a year for the, for houses, for residences, right? Because that's a residential unit.
Right. It's a residential unit.
So it's twenty-seven dollars per year, I guess.
And the other thing you folks would also need to vote on, again, according to the bylaw, and looking at some of the detail, is identifying specifically what a equivalent residential unit is, and it's basically thirty-four hundred square feet of impervious surface. That's something that also needs to be voted upon to make this all work.
Okay.
Just in another point of fact, we are engaging Tie and Bond, we haven't kicked off the effort, but we are engaging them to help us develop some recommendations for abatements for non-residential. So if you have a large-scale development and you're managing all your stormwater on-site, can you get a credit for the money you spend to do that? Which is, there are different, I mean, lots of states have these, different places do it different ways. So we want to look at some best practices for the non-residential side. Since all residential is one rate, we're not looking at residential abatements, but for commercial we are, and that process will be happening here in the next month or two.
And then what about nonprofits? Because, see, we have, like, university and...
No, it's, your taxable status has nothing to do with it. It's just your impervious area.
Right, yeah.
So they'll pay. Churches pay, Bay Path pays.
Towne Middle will pay.
Towne Middle will pay.
That's what I was going to ask. So how is this going to happen?
We're going to have to increase, we're going to have to increase certain budgets to accommodate this new fee.
It's going to be money in, money out, kind of thing?
It'll be money in and hopefully more money in, and more, more out, more, more money, money out, but more money coming in, obviously, because of residential.
Right, right, right. But like, for example, schools, Long Middle High School has, was the number one on the list.
Long Middle High School, number one on the list, would have a cost of about thirty-six-hundred bucks.
Right.
I believe in total, the cost of the town for all its impervious services is about twenty-one thousand dollars.
So this is all from that, the permit, right, the MS permit?
It's all basically to address the MS four, MS four permits will take effect.
It was just delayed a year?
It was delayed a year, right.
And is there any thoughts about relief for elderly, for seniors running?
I, well, I think, what I had, in the conversation that I had with Tracy, who's going to be doing that abatement thing, is that we potentially look at tying into the same type of income or wealth levels that are tied into the property taxes, that we have something very equal, so that if they're eligible for one, they would be eligible. If they're eligible for one, they're also eligible for CPA abatement. And I would think that they would, potentially could be eligible for this also.
Tom, very frankly, one of the reasons I was so intent on trying to hold the line on water and sewer rates, knowing that this additional twenty-seven dollars was coming along for stormwaters. You know, now that doesn't mean it's, it's great, but at least we can say, look, we're not raising water and sewer rates this year because we're implementing storm sewer. And I'll just say, you know, personally, I oppose this, this whole, the bylaw, but it was passed by town meeting. It was approved, it's in place, and we're, you know, to some degree obligated to now fund it. And so I'm going to vote for this rate. I think it's the most reasonable thing we can do, given the fact that the residents of the town voted to implement this storm sewer utility.
Right.
And I personally oppose it because it's, it's the first step in moving taxes into fees. Your stormwater utility bill is not a tax, it's a fee.
Right.
It's also a regulation that was thrust upon us.
Oh, that's also true, Tom.
I mean...
Leading federal regulations about runoff, we don't have any choice on this.
No, I mean, if I could be permitted for a little devil's advocacy?
Just a little one.
The, we spend a million dollars a year on stormwater management without MS four. So there's, there's real costs associated with this. The second thing is, we just had a conversation about finding smaller local ways to generate additional revenue for long-term, for our long-term future. This is squarely in that category. Now, you made the comment earlier about out of one pocket into the other. That is, I think, eighty percent or ninety percent true, but there is a component of this money that does come from people not currently paying property taxes. So that is, now, is it an overwhelming source of new revenue from the tax-exempt properties? No, but it's little. And it's something that, like I said, these are, this is the model that we are going to have to confront in the near future.
And I think Tom hit it when he said, excuse me, Bill hit it when he said, and it was a regulation, it was passed at town meeting, I'm not arguing to vote against it. I think, Paul, what might be interesting to do is, you know, yes, it's two-hundred-thousand dollars, you know, so you say, two-hundred-thousand dollars, which we're probably going to spend anyway, is worth, and you know off the top of your head, what is that, three cents on your, on the tax rate?
No, it's probably about nine.
Nine cents on the tax rate? So everybody at home who's going to pay twenty-seven dollars, take and say, otherwise your tax rate would have been nine cents higher. That's all you got to do. And so when you say, gee, I'm paying this twenty-seven dollars, yeah, but you would have otherwise been paying twenty-nine dollars or twenty, or thirty dollars with your extra nine cents. And that's the way it's got to be sold.
The other thing I would clarify, because when you connect the two thoughts together, what Bill is saying is, MS four, the national mandate on stormwater utility, on stormwater management, was the mandate that was thrust upon us. Not the town meeting bylaw, which we voluntarily put on the warrant, let the towns be vote by a two-thirds majority, I might add, to approve.
Okay. So we need two motions. The first motion is for the rate, and the second motion...
I would say the first motion is to establish the ERU.
It's fine.
Okay. So the first is a motion for the ERU.
So moved.
Well, I'll move that we establish one equivalent residential unit for stormwater utility fee at thirty-four hundred square feet of impervious surface. That's what you want to have, right?
All right. And we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. And then the next motion is for the rate.
Two dollars and twenty-five cents per month per ERU.
Why is it a monthly fee, Paul, instead of an annual fee?
It's just the way that it was calculated. I mean, we could say it's twenty-seven dollars, I believe.
Well, wait, what? Say, I'm sorry.
My question is, why is the rate set as a monthly rate instead of a quarterly rate or an annual rate?
I mean, this is how we, that's how we calculated it, and that's how we presented it at a town meeting. The one thing, we do have to slice and dice this a little finer.
Okay.
Because all residential, so the rate would be two dollars and twenty-five cents per ERU. Is it in the bylaw that all residents is paid?
I thought it was. I'm just looking right now.
I want to confirm that because, and then the tiered system for non-residential is something that we may need to adopt as, if it's not the bylaw.
It's a third.
As a third thing, because the actual charge is what we're assessing here now. And so every, it's one ERU, thirty-four hundred square feet, but for residential, no matter how big your, no matter how much impervious area you have, you're still paying one ERU. That's important, to make sure we know that, we know we're doing that.
Okay, so...
At least give us a second.
Sorry, are we ready for a motion? We had two-twenty-five per month. Can we go with that motion?
We can go with the, for ERU.
Oh, no. Okay, sorry. The block?
Yeah, the block is in the, the block is definitely in the bylaw.
The select board shall, this is B and C and D, the select board shall establish user fee for each ERU by the adoption of a written resolution by vote of the select board. A schedule of said rate shall be filed with the town manager, the town Long Meadow. And the select board shall, by resolution, establish the square footage that constitutes one ERU on a periodic basis. So we've done that, we've set thirty-four hundred square feet, right? And then we, and now we were going to set the rate.
So a proposal...
But nowhere do we have to set...
So, okay...
So it'd be for a single-family?
No, it's, so, sorry.
Residential property.
Yeah, let me, sorry to interrupt. So there's two classifications, and this is section E. So you are going to, what you want is a motion to set, to set the small residential property rate at one, at two-twenty-five...
No, the small residential property at one ERU.
At one ERU. Sorry. So the small residential property rate will be one ERU, okay? That's a separate, that'll be a second vote. And then the non-residential rate will be as shown in the bylaw.
As shown in the bylaw.
Okay? And then the third, the fourth vote, or if you want to combine those two, you can, but then the fourth thing would be, each ERU shall be a charge, two dollars and twenty-five cents a month. So you set the, what an ERU is, you already done that.
Yeah.
And then you're going to say, small residential pays, it will be assessed at one ERU, and the non-residential will be, will be, will be char, will be assessed in accordance with the bylaw, which has this table, this...
Sliding scale.
The sliding scale.
So we say the small residential will be charged one ERU, and do I have a second on that? Okay.
Well, no, are you making that motion?
We can't, yeah, I got to make that motion. And I'll make that motion.
Well, why don't we combine it, that the small residential property rate shall be set at one ERU, and non-residential property rates as per the bylaw?
Yeah.
We can make that as one motion.
Yeah, because you can see the bylaw has a table with the ERUs.
Okay. So that's a motion you want...
A second.
Seconded, okay. All those in favor? Okay.
And then FY nineteen rate will be two dollars and twenty-five cents per ERU per month.
Okay, we have a...
Is that, they do that right?
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor? All right. We are there. Good, good, good. I would like to close. Any of those subcommittee reports? Okay.
I've got one more.
What?
New business number three.
New business number three? Oh, my God, I'll never get out of here. And that would be...
But that's just acknowledge that there's a...
Looking at dates, yeah.
That it's a memo.
Just to make sure that you're, you're in agreement with the dates, kind of. It's on, basically gone historical dates that we've always had.
So maybe we should just read it so people hear it? Not that anyone's watching.
And then we'll get it posted.
Tom, can I just read it?
Yes.
All articles from, from departments and boards for the May eighth, two thousand and eighteen town meeting must be submitted no later than four P M. on Monday, May, February twenty-sixth at town meeting. All citizens' petitions are due in the select board's office for the May eighth, two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting, no later than noon on Monday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. In order for a petition to be guaranteed placement on the annual town meeting, warrant, ten names, signatures, and addresses of registered town voters are required and must be certified by the town clerk.
Okay.
We don't have to take any action, that's just a Kathy Ingram thing, right?
Did we set the time of the annual town meeting?
Yeah, we did.
I think we did. The annual town meeting is set, is it not?
Yes.
Yeah, we set that.
May, I think it was done previous, it wasn't done today, it was done previously.
Just prior to adjournment, I'd like to again thank Deb House for her help with the, she